Mayor, we are... Mayor, the meeting is recording and we have a quorum, as far as I can see.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, thank you for that. Is Jane Keller present, our police chaplain?
Yes, and I just want to confirm that I... If I could do a real quick roll call, I want to make sure that I have everybody in line.
All right, do that. I thought you told me we had it. Go ahead, do the roll call, then we'll do the pledge. I mean, the invocation. Go ahead.
Councilmember Becerra? Councilmember Becerra?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Here.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Here.
Councilmember Solorio?
Here.
Mayor Potem Viegas?
Here.
And Mayor Polido?
Here.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Let's proceed with the invocation, please.
And she's coming up to the podium.
Dear honey father, we come before you to ask that you bless the city council and the mayor with your wisdom and understanding and discernment in the issues that are before them, that they will do their very best for the citizens of Santa Ana. Please bless the Chief Valentin and all the officers that are on patrol while they're out there protecting our city. Just pray these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
All righty. So, Madam City Clerk, or City Attorney, I'm sure there was nothing to report out, right? But just from a man with a request?
Correct. We had no closed session items this evening, so no report.
Okay. Now we have a special presentation regarding November 3 election. We're going to have somebody here from the Orange County Register of Voters.
Yes, we do. Justin Bar...
Are they present, Madam Clerk?
Yes, he is. His name is Justin Baradino, and you've been unmuted, Justin. And we will go ahead and move the slides forward here for you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council, for having me today. The first slide that I'd like to speak to is the one titled "Ballots Returned by Method." So I'm going to talk with... Talk about what we learned from the data from the March election, and then I will get into the preparations for the November election. So what I'm showing here is how voters voted in March. And as you can see, the number of people who voted by mail far eclipsed the number who voted in person. This also shows that the drop box with over 100,000 voters had a very strong showing considering this was the first election drop boxes were used in Orange County. So if we can go to the next slide. And this one is titled "Data from In-Person Voting by Date." And what we're demonstrating here is in March, there was an 11-day voting period. And this shows the amount of in-person voters by date during that voting period. As you can see, most of the voting in person occurred on the last four days of that voting period, and the highest being on the last day of voting. So this is important to note because this will inform the decision-making process for November on how many days we will be open for in-person voting. If we go to the next slide, this one's titled "Changes of Voting Habits." And this is one of the more interesting data points that we saw from the March election. So it's a comparison of voting habits between the 2018 general election and the 2020 primary election. And it's broken up by those who traditionally did not vote by mail and those who traditionally vote by mail. So the first graph shows that those who traditionally did not vote by mail in the 2018 general election, the orange bar represents the percentage that voted in person. So almost 90% voted in person. Now, in the 2020 primary, that same subset of voters, the voting habit changed dramatically. And again, this was the first election where every voter in the county was sent a vote-by-mail ballot. You can see more of those voters voted by mail than voted in person. And again, those are those who traditionally did not vote by mail. Between the... Those who did traditionally vote by mail, you can see there was no real change in voting habits between the 2018 and the 2020 primaries. But this does demonstrate that those who had not previously requested vote-by-mail ballots, when they got them, they chose to vote using them. So that's some interesting data from March that, again, will be used for decision-making in November. And now I will talk about what we are doing to prepare for November. The next slide is the voting options. So November will have the same components that we had in March: an in-person voting option with vote centers, returning by drop box, and of course, voting by mail. As you go, the next slide is just the graphics showing that it's the same services that we offered in March. But the in-person component may be modified a little bit. And there's a bill in the state senate right now, SB 423, and that will... Depending on the outcome of that bill, that will define how the in-person voting will look: how many sites are required and how many days. If we go to the next slide, "Changes Due to COVID." So for... To prepare for voting in person for COVID, we really have to look at the modifications we're going to be making for vote centers. So we've been doing some rehearsals. We've been doing some testing to try to figure out what the best way to offer this in-person voting. So some of the things that will change will be the stations, the check-in stations will be farther apart. The voting booths will not be next to each other like they historically have been. There's going to be a cleaning protocol after every voter. So obviously, that's going to affect how much we can fit in a vote center, how many people that can fit in a vote center. But that, along with promoting the voting-at-home option, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a second. And then there's also additional options. So for example, historically, remote-accessible vote-by-mail, that's the online ballot marketing, was only available to those with disabilities or overseas voters. Well, now that's expanded to those who may have COVID and can't vote in person or somehow affected by COVID. If we go to the next slide, another component for November is a large media campaign. So if you remember in March, getting pieces of mail, seeing things on buses, there's going to be a similar campaign, but now instead the focus is going to be how to vote while staying safe and the options available. So those are just a couple highlights of the changes to COVID. If we go to the next slide, again, voting... In-person voting locations in Santa Ana, that is in the works. But we have not secured any yet because we're waiting for that SB 423. And once that passes, if that passes, then we will begin to procure vote centers throughout the county, including Santa Ana. The next slide shows the ballot drop box locations. So the... The blue locations are the current ballot locations, and those will remain the same for November. The red ones are ones that we are removing, and the green ones are where we're moving... Placing new ballot drop box locations. So we're hoping with those two new sites that'll provide better coverage throughout the city of Santa Ana. And those are both city locations. So we're looking forward to the support from the city administration, the city council, to approve the agreements for those new ballot drop box locations. The next slide, regarding security considerations. The part that I'd like to focus on for security considerations is voting at home. Make sure people understand the safeguards that are in place for voting by mail and the checks and balances. For example, if you vote by mail, you can track your ballot. You can go online, look up yourself as a voter, and see the status of your ballot, see where it is in the mail flow. You can also sign up for proactive updates, and you can get text at each step along your ballot's process and be notified when our ballot... When your ballot is received by our office. Also, if a ballot comes in and the signature doesn't match, or... A ballot comes in and there's no signature, you're going to get a letter describing what happened and give you a chance to cure the ballot or take any necessary action. So although there's a lot to talk about security, that one is really one that we... That's one that we really want to focus on communicating for November because that is an important part of security. So with that, I will make it available for any questions.
Go ahead. Councilmembers' questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Becerra.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Baradino, for the presentation. I really appreciate you taking the time to present this information to the council and to our community. My one question that I have is, in looking at the slide that was titled "Preparing for November," other than the registrar of voters and Memorial Park, there are no ballot drop-off locations south of First Street. Is there a reason why there are so many north of First Street but not anything south of First Street?
Well, again, if you go back to that slide, we are proposing Memorial Park, which is a city location south of First Street. And the reason that we were in that position before is there's a couple factors. The one factor is when, considering where to put the locations, there's 13 criteria that are part of the Voters' Choice Act that you have to consider. And that includes, for example, population centers, historical voting habits. Those sorts of things go into where you should be placing the drop boxes. That on top of availability, you know, we can... In a perfect world, you might want to spread them out, you know, perfectly throughout the county, but you have to get locations that agree to allow you to put drop boxes on their property. So that's why we're hopeful that we can get this Memorial Park contract signed and get a drop box in that southern part of Santa Ana. Also, too, in that area above Memorial Park, kind of the central part, that's a very industrial area, so it's not a high... High-targeted area according to the requirement of the Voters' Choice Act.
Well, Mr. Baradino, north of Memorial Park, residential. I'm sorry. Daisy, did you just unmute me?
No, you're unmuted. You're still unmuted.
Okay. I heard something said I was muting. Sorry. No, Mr. Baradino, north of Memorial Park is very residential. That is not an industrial area. If you go east of Memorial Park, say, past Standard, you start to get into industrial areas such as the areas south of the ROV. But I just... I have to express my disappointment that a whole half of the densest city in Orange County, the second-densest in California, and there's a huge swath, I mean, almost two-thirds of the city, that is only going to have two ballot drop-off locations. I really hope that Memorial Park isn't the only new one. I hope you'll consider looking at perhaps the Delhi Community Center. There may be some other places south of Warner that might also be available. But I just... Too south of First Street, for me, is just unacceptable.
Well, I... Again, I appreciate that input. And again, one of the things that, you know, moves the decision-making on this is the availability of properties to allow us to put the drop boxes there. So...
And I hope you're able to find those, but right now, you've got a population south of First Street. Many of them are dependent on transit. Many of them walk to the store, to the parks, and to just completely leave this as a desert when it comes to the availability of a ballot drop-off location. Again, I'm going to say, it's very unacceptable.
Again, we do push for that, and that's why we are looking forward to cooperation with the city to procure these sites and provide that availability for us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Sarmiento. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Justin, for, you know, your presentation. I want to just follow up on Councilmember Becerra's points, and, you know, maybe we stay on the slides a little bit. But before then, I also wanted to say thank you to the clerk because I know that I had, you know, requested that she... She contact you and the registrar of voters, Neil Kelly, to come in and speak to us about this. And I think it's good to have this conversation in mid or late July so we can talk about things that we can cure between now and November because we know it is going to be in a regular cycle, and it has been for us since, you know, since the primary date in March. But, you know, we know that in the past, you know, there have been challenges to just voting, and we see that there's unfortunately, you know, other parts of the country that are dealing with these same challenges, whether it's, you know, in-person voting and machinery not working, equipment not being really as, you know, as efficient and effective as they should be. But for us, I think here in this county, I think a lot of it has to do with just accessibility. And, you know, I appreciate a lot of what you were saying, Justin, about, you know, things that are being done to try to accommodate, you know, folks with disabilities and being able to online vote and, you know, making options available. And we really don't know how things are going to look, but given where we are right now, things probably are not going to look all that much different in November or as we approach. So we probably need to start bracing for the scenario where we more than likely are going to be doing almost exclusively voting by mail, although that isn't, you know, obviously, everybody's, you know, preference. But I think we just need to prepare for that. So to the extent that we, you know, we can have this conversation, I think it was good that, you know, Councilmember Becerra talked about the distribution of these drop boxes. I think we had some of that same concern in March. I understand that, you know, obviously, south of First, the only one was the registrar of voters because the Memorial Park site wasn't even there. So you had a very large part of the city who, you know, couldn't walk or couldn't, you know, access their drop boxes easily. And as you know, we have a very high ridership in the city that, you know, rides buses and, you know, walks and just accesses their services by foot. So, you know, I would say that maybe we can begin this conversation about availability because I don't know if you were saying exclusively the reason why, you know, we have these sites is because, you know, these are voting patterns from the past. You know, the Voters' Choice Act has some criteria that defines where these should be placed. And I guess, I'm not sure if what's determining is the entire county distribution, or are you looking at it city by city? And if you're looking at it city by city, if you see, you know, the dense... The most dense is part of the city is, you know, south of First. And so we're leaving a whole lot of folks just with challenges to being able to easily drop their votes off and their ballots off. So, you know, I hope that, you know, our clerk and our staff will be working with you, and maybe we can revisit this map and see what it looks like after you all have had a chance to speak. But I just think that maybe there's some improvements that can be made. I just certainly want to make it as easily accessible for folks who are going to be voting here in the city. You know, my concern is that there is going to be a lot of confusion. So to the extent your outreach and your media efforts are done in a multilingual way because, you know, as you know, we have a lot of bilingual and monolingual speakers, both in Spanish and in Vietnamese. And so that's obviously very important to me that, you know, those folks are contacted. And that you speak with us as well about challenges that you see unique to this cycle, not just locations, not just, you know, voting by mail, but other things, you know, other ways. And I think we were talking about it, you know. Yeah, I think one of the last comments you made is how you... How votes get... Or ballots get disqualified. I think those are things that are important that we discuss as well because that the voter doesn't really... May not know that, that their vote is not going to be counted if for some reason they fail to provide a signature, they fail to check a certain box or present things in a certain way. So I'm glad we're having these conversations now because I think we have some room for improvement in this view. And, you know, Neil will, you know, hopefully, consider coming back to us as you've made some of these, you know, some of these changes and accommodated some of the things that we're hopefully going to share with you and have shared with you. You know, we'd appreciate it. But thank you for coming and giving the presentation. Hopefully, you'll take those constructive criticisms and receive them well.
Mr. Mayor?
This is Councilmember Peñalosa.
I'm taking over for the mayor for a couple of minutes, so he'll be right back. But go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to also thank Justin for the presentation and kind of just echo both Councilmember Becerra and Sarmiento's comments. And one of the things that I noticed from why you decided to... Or why the registrar of voters has decided to put the ballot drop-off boxes in these locations, and I know Councilmember Sarmiento briefly touched on it, was the historical voting habits. And, you know, it's decisions like this map here that have caused the suppression of votes and caused these historical voting habits because, you know, 50% of our residents don't have access to a car. You know, 50... You know, we have a working-class community that work multiple jobs a day and don't have the time to go vote or... On a voting day and whatnot. So it's going to be very important for this city and the registrar of voters and just, you know, for our democracy to really take a look at this map and make those ballot drop-off boxes accessible. Just south of First Street, there are a lot of public parks. There are a lot of empty schools that I know that are ADA compliant, that we need to make sure that the registrar of voters is talking to the school district, talking to the city, and asking if we could install these ballot drop-off boxes throughout the city and make sure it's equitable. So those are the only things that I wanted to also point out. I agree with both my colleagues, so thank you for that. And it's, you know, we have a chance here to change this historical voting habits. Yes, central Santa Ana, you know, it's probably the lower voter turnout in the city, but doesn't mean they're not voting because they don't want to. It's because it's not as easy for them as they would like it to be. So if we have a chance to make it easy for them and change that, that's going to go a long ways. So thank you, Justin, for the presentation, and those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Potem.
Absolutely. Any other comments? I hear somebody in the background. Somebody's not muted.
Councilmember Mendoza, I believe that's your phone. Councilmember Mendoza?
All right, maybe just mute it.
I think she just...
Before we go on to the next subject, I just wanted to add that this really does matter because unfortunately, I was involved in a primary election in March, and we were way, way, way below numbers we normally achieve. So I don't know if there was education of the voters, if there was too many changes at the same time. But if we don't do a better job for November, we're going to have also a very low turnout. And that'll not only affect local races, but certainly, as it relates to the city being represented regionally, that's a double whammy for us. And I think if you look at turnout, we are probably amongst the lowest in the county compared to other, you know, historical turnout levels. So, you know, please pay extra attention to this right now because I think, you know, these impacts are very significant. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, let me thank you for coming down, and we'll continue with our agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Baradino.
Yeah, thank you again for... Thank you again for having me, and I appreciate the support, and I appreciate the support going forward that the city will provide in obtaining voting locations for November. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. With this, Madam Clerk, what I'd like to do right now, I know we have some public comment. Whatever you have, can you tell me right now what it is? And then I'd like to have a cutoff so that going into the comment, we know how many we have. Do you have that number right now, Madam Clerk?
I do. We have 11.
All right, let's start with those 11. I'll turn it over to you. Let's give each one three minutes. If anybody begins to swear anything of that nature, you have my permission to terminate the testimonies. And let's go ahead and open it up.
Go ahead.
Okay. Caller with the last three numbers, 398. For the record, you're encouraged but not required to clearly state your name. Please limit your comments to an agenda item or limit your comments to matters within the jurisdiction or official business of the city of Santa Ana and identify your neighborhood or city, if not from the city of Santa Ana, of residence. You have three minutes to speak. Caller whose number ends again with 398, please proceed with your comment.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. My name is Julian Gutierrez, and I wish to speak on the issue of our city budget. We have seen time and time again that our countrymen, young and old, have been risking their lives for the police department across the country. And despite the violence and protests and subsequent intimidation, city officials, including this one, has voted time and time again to continually raise the budget of our police, sending the message that this kind of behavior is not only condoned, but also rewarded. I am not calling for the full abolition of our police, whether I feel like it is necessary to limit our police spending in order to divert the funds to other departments, such as healthcare, education, and social programs to curb the influx of crime in our streets and homes and properly face the national crisis of the COVID-19 resurgence at hand. In doing so, we can kill two birds with one stone and ensure that Santa Ana can go on in a stronger position than it was before the pandemic and serve as an example that other cities should follow. If the soul is blessed in darkness, sin will be committed. The guilty is not he who commits the sin, but the one who causes the darkness. To curb the rise of COVID-19 cases, we must have a strict mandate of our businesses and employees... I'm sorry. Of our businesses for employees and customers to have masks and have PPE and testing sites readily available to ensure the... To, for usage, ensure their contact tracing and curb our numbers. As for school, as an educator, I want nothing more than to see my kids again. But I have a duty not only to educate them, but to ensure that they are being educated in a safe and proper environment. Governor Newsom has cut the funding to our education system, but in order to properly meet the needs of our low-income, mentally challenged, and at-risk students, it is imperative that we have the necessary budget and pool of resources in order to ensure our students can learn effectively and have help to tutoring, counseling, and therapy readily accessible. I love my country. And I know that through these reforms, they can become the pinnacle of freedom and diversity that we have always aspired to be. Although public safety is in mind, it is the condition that people are in that determine the rate of crime, and we have seen little improvement on the standard of living of Santa Ana citizens despite the continual rise of the police department's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Who's phone number... Oh, this is Nathaniel Greenside. Please proceed... uh, proceed with your comment.
Hi. Hello, City Council. My name is Nathaniel Greensides and I am a resident of Ward Five, meaning that you are my ward representative, Mr. Vega. Yet I never seem to hear from you via email. Nonetheless, I am here to speak upon a non-agenda item. I'd like to offer some action that you all can take to reduce the harm of the upcoming wave of evictions and burden on renters as COVID-19 continues to ravage our city at the same time that city protections are coming to an end. The first thing would be to pass a permanent ban on COVID-19-related eviction, uh, evictions. This would mean that any renters or homeowners get a chance to continue to live in Santa Ana while they catch up on late payments related to COVID-19 loss of income. San Francisco did it, so can we. The second would be to create a larger rental assistance fund. Anaheim created a fund of $3 million and our city fund of $500,000 was exhausted in one week's time. The third and more, most pertinent to many renters here in Santana would be to pass an ordinance granting a private right to action. This means that tenants would have a right to sue unscrupulous landlords, and I know there are far too many here in Santa Ana, as I am a part of Tenant United Santa Ana, and we have been receiving an absurd amount of calls from renters regarding illegal self-help evictions, harassment based on perceived immigration status, and illegal rent increases which landlords are carrying out not just during the pandemic, but also before it. Separately, the fourth item would be to create a separate fund for eviction defense for some of the same reasons previously stated. Fines upon landlords could start at $10,000 and it would also incentivize attorney, attorney representation of the interest of tenants and keeping our community stable. It would also reduce the rate at which the rental assistance fund would be exhausted if tenants have a better shot at recovering lost money due to damages caused by irresponsible and greedy landlords. Lastly, and most importantly, would be to place our ballot initiative, which Tenant United, Santa Ana, our coalition has been collecting signatures for since February on... Am I still here?
Yes, you're still there.
Okay. Uh, been collecting signatures for since February until the next general election, which would be in November 2022, unfortunately. Or you all have the power as City Council to call for a special election, which is within your power solely for this rent control initiative, which would keep us all housed and economically able to remain in Santa Ana. Unfortunately, COVID-19
Thirty seconds left.
halted our signature gathering efforts because unfortunately, democratic process was not deemed to be an essential activity. Putting permanent rent control initiative to all voters in an election is within your power, and you all applauded the 2121 North Main Street referendum with the rationale that it was the will of the people. And so we're asking that, uh, you put our rent control initiative as a stand onto the ballot so as to ensure that people have a chance to remain in Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 970, please proceed with your comment.
This is Josh Mocha. I, I believe that the agenda item that I want to comment on hasn't been discussed yet. So if you'd like to mute me, I'm, I'm, I'd like to discuss Page 13 or if you could.
That you may speak on all agenda items that's listed on the agenda or non-agenda items, with the exception of public hearings, then this call will open up again.
Okay, regarding a public hearing.
Okay, we'll open up again for public hearing. The next caller with the last three numbers of 763, you have been unmuted. You have three minutes. Please proceed with your comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jose Trinidad Casametra and I am the Orange County Organizer with the Climate Action Campaign, the region's leading climate watchdog organization. And I'm, uh, speaking with you tonight to request that you bring Community Choice Energy as a discussion item, uh, to your next City Council meeting on August 18th. For those of you who may not know, Community Choice Energy is a not-for-profit program that, uh, procures cleaner and cheaper energy for Santa Ana families. Right now we have a monopoly, uh, SoCal Edison, which, uh, charges, uh, for that electric generation. And as you may have heard, uh, they are bringing a rate increase for November and again in January for a total of 14.4% uh, rate increases for the generation rate. And so, Community Choice has grown across the state. Actually, 10 million families across the state of California already benefit from having Community Choice in their region. Uh, Orange County is one of those last holdout places where we hope to change that. And so, Santa Ana, uh, was one of, uh, a couple of cities that responded to Irvine's invitation to share information regarding, uh, the development of Community Choice Energy in Orange County. And so, I'm very happy to share that Irvine City Council has unanimously voted to move forward on creating a joint powers authority with a partner city, uh, by the end of this year. And they voted on that six times in a row because we've had hundreds and hundreds, actually over 700 Irvine residents continuously submit comments in favor and in support of Community Choice. Now, over the next, uh, couple of months, I'm sure you'll get more interest from Santa Ana residents who want to see the benefits of 0.5 to 2% lower electricity rates, uh, millions in citywide cost savings, uh, millions in annual economic input, and, uh, and hundreds of new jobs in the region come to Santa Ana. Community Choice is the only way to provide the freedom of choice for Santa Ana families as well as, uh, bringing cost savings. It's the only way
Thirty seconds left.
to achieve, uh, state mandates to, uh, get to 100% clean renewable energy. It's the only way to ensure local control over our energy supply, and you get to decide where those revenues go and help pay for different programs and services, especially for your disadvantaged communities and, uh, using an equity lens to ensure that Santa Ana families get the full benefit of that. But that can only happen
Time is up.
if you decide to have the discussion as soon as possible because there is a strict timeline that Irvine needs to follow.
Thank you, your time is up. Callers with, uh, with the last three numbers, 883, you have been unmuted. Please proceed with your comment. You have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor, uh, Mayor Potem and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Janelle Walker. I'm a resident of Ward Three in the Park Glen community. Um, here to speak on a few different items. Uh, the first item, um, I would like to bring attention to is 65A. It is the, uh, Veterans Recognition Program throughout the city. Um, I was very excited to see this on the agenda as my family has the history of, um, veterans serving in our family. My late grandfather was a veteran, my, uh, father was a veteran. Um, so I know that in other cities, we have things like banners, um, which show all, which showcase residents who served in the military. So I think that's something great that we can really do as a city, um, to think, um, and publicly recognize all of our veterans. I'm also very interested to hear, um, the item, uh, within, well, the subpart of this item, um, which will discuss the Veterans Museum at the Heroes Hall. Um, so again, very excited to hear, um, what that discussion will be. Um, second item I'd also like to discuss is 85A. I was really happy to see this on the council agenda as well. Um, really happy to see that as residents, we have the opportunity to give our public comment in a safe manner considering, um, the new developments of COVID-19, business closures, um, and us unfortunately reverting back, um, to more of what we were like and a more stringent, uh, stay-at-home order. Um, so seeing how this may go forward, I'm very excited to see, um, this opportunity to give public comments like I am right now over the phone. And, uh, the third item I'd also, um, like to draw attention to is 85B. Um, it's not exactly the item itself, but it sparks an idea in my mind and it's something, um, I would like the council to consider. Um, I know that you have the COVID-19, um, Sub Business Incentive Program, which currently has a waitlist for new businesses. Um, and that program also has, um, some criteria which only allows certain businesses, let's say microbusinesses, high refuer employees, um, businesses that just started up in the city within the last three years, um, to receive the grant. Um, I would like to propose using the Federal Rights Act funding, um, to provide a business license waiver in, um, the entire city if possible.
Thirty seconds left.
I know that, um, small businesses, um, are tracked by the, uh, business pack staff within the city. Um, so they know which business licenses are active, which ones are inactive, and if any of those business licenses have gone inactive, let's say during the COVID-19 pandemic, um, unfortunately businesses may think, well, if the governor is going to shut us down, maybe we should not pay this, um, BS this time and allow it to lapse while we've seen that he's closed businesses, he's opened businesses.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 268, you have been unmuted. Please proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Yosi and I'm a resident in Ward Two and also volunteer, um, as the Righteous Tenant Rights Council from Tenant United Santana. I'm calling as a concerned resident about the upcoming wave, a wave of evictions that will occur after eviction moratorium ends July 28th. At the same time, we are experiencing our highest rate of, um, COVID cases. Many people have been unable to pay rent because they have been impacted by the pandemic, and we know that these impacts will be long-term. Everyone deserves to be housed and safe. And so, um, we hope you all will enact a permanent ban on COVID-19-related eviction and also enact a private right to action ordinance that will stop landlords from breaking the law by making them liable for civil penalties if found guilty of violating tenants' rights during the moratoriums on evictions and rent increases. Also, Governor Newsom has given cities, given you all power to extend the moratorium till September. And so I hope you all take the recommendations and implement them here in Santana, um, let's provide safety and well-being for everyone here. Um, I've also been a part of a campaign to put rent control under November ballot. Um, we recognize that Santana community members need rent control because it is a rent-to-majority city that is extremely of low income and rent burden. Rent control will provide some economic relief to folks, especially during this precarious socioeconomic time. We have been so successful in getting so much support from the community. Unfortunately, the pandemic halted our signature gathering for the safety of our volunteers, which has affected our campaign goal to put the ordinance on the ballot. And we're hoping, um, to get an extension on the deadline to account for the days we couldn't gather signatures during the shelter-in-place orders. Our work we did before the pandemic should be recognized, and we hope that we can count on your support for the extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 351, you have been unmuted. Please proceed with your comment.
Hello, good evening. My name is Chloe Rios and I am the Executive Director at Alianza Transpatinex, the very first transgender, um, organization here in Santana, being led by trans women of color. And the reason that I wanted to speak to you is because two weeks ago I presented myself and the organization, uh, during the last, uh, city meeting. Uh, I also requested to have support from the city so that we can continue to help this very vulnerable community, uh, which continues to be one of the most marginalized communities, um, here in Orange County. I did not receive any, um, no one ever reached out to us. We continue, uh, to serve the community during these very difficult times of COVID-19. Uh, our community continues to face discrimination, discrimination in areas such as healthcare, uh, employment, and, uh, other areas that are in grave need. So, uh, again, our name is Alianza Transpatinex. We really need your support. I hope you consider to make, uh, a part of the next agenda, um, to, to talk about the transgender community and the needs, um, so that we can better serve this community. And I, I hope to hear from you. I hope that, uh, we can work with the city clerk office so that we can, um, make this, um, we can make this possible. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, caller with the last three numbers, 399, you have been unmuted. Please proceed with your comment.
Um, good evening. I am the applicant representative on item 75A, and I would like to, um, hold my comments for that agenda item as a public hearing.
Thank you. We'll put you on mute. Caller with the last three numbers, 703, please proceed with your comment.
Hello, my name is Hector and I'm a resident in Ward Four. I'm here to express my disappointment in this city council for approving the budget for next fiscal year. Shame on you. You heard hours of public comments from the youth of this city, your constituents, about our disagreement with the budget presented before you. You have once again failed to serve us. You have failed the youth of Santana. I'm a resident of Ward Four, so I'd like to bring attention to something that, uh, my council member, um, has continuously brought up, the shared mission of Santana, which reads, "To deliver efficient public service in partnership with our community, which ensures public safety, a prosperous economic environment, opportunities for our youth, and a high quality of life for residents." But tell me, why do the youth of this city have to take the short end of the stick when it comes to that mission? Why aren't we investing as much in our youth as we're investing in our police department? Why does public safety even look, what does it even look like in Santana? Because right now, more than ever, the police are a threat to our community. They are a threat to the youth of this city. They are a threat to Black and Indigenous colored communities. And if you really want to bring up this mission statement, then why, why can't you stand by it? Why couldn't you listen to the hundreds of comments you received by email and in person? Why are you voting for a budget that your community has clearly told you is not representative of what we need? Your yes vote has once again perpetuated the way the rest of Orange County looks at our youth. Your yes vote said, "We need more police because our youth are out of line for simply showing up to a city council meeting and giving a public comment." Your yes vote said, "We don't care about the National Movement for Black Lives because the Police Officers Association is far too deep in my pockets for me to care, and I need to be reelected with their dirty money." Shame on you. The youth of Santana are reclaiming the word bullshit because we know BS when we see it. And the fact that our language bothers you more than the murder of innocent Black lives says a lot about the kind of people that you are. It amazes me to know that you all care more about one bad word than a human life, a human life. It's actually pretty disgusting to be even, even saying that. The youth will follow your every move until November, and we will continue to fight for what we know our community needs. I'd also like to say that the direction to dial star nine is not clearly stated on your agenda. You're making it inaccessible for callers to give a public comment by failing to provide clear and transparent instructions for dialing in to give a public comment. How many more times do we have to tell the city clerk about these issues? Why are they not being addressed? Why is the city council not doing enough to ensure that our public is given the opportunity to give a comment? Do more, do better, simply just do something.
Thank you for your comment. Um, David Carvajal, you have been unmuted. Please...
Hi, my name is David Carvajal and I'm a resident of Ward Two. I want to echo the words of folks that have called previously to, uh, let you all know that we've been fighting for rent control in the city of Santana for a few years, and unfortunately, the pandemic did not allow us to continue gathering signatures. And we want to make sure that, um, you all listen to the community. Uh, we work day in and day out with tenants that are giving us their lived experiences facing, um, rent burden and not being able to, um, pay their rent. Um, and I want you all to also remember that, um, you have the power to extend our eviction moratorium, um, till September, um, and then continue providing protections for tenants in Santana. Um, I want to remind you all that, um, it is important that in the middle of a global health, uh, crisis, you continue, uh, tending to the needs of those most vulnerable in our communities. Um, and I wanted to just encourage you all to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That was the last comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, let's now direct our attention to the consent calendar. And I would ask, like to ask my colleagues if there are any items that they'd like to abstain on or pull.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
Uh, well, this is, uh, Councilmember Sarmiento, and I did want to pull 25B as an OI. But, um, before we did that, um, uh, this is a question for, uh, the city attorney because we just left public comments. And I know that, uh, you as presiding chair, Mr. Mayor, said that, that we, uh, you gave the right to the city clerk to go ahead and mute anybody that made any comments that were profane. So I just wanted to get the city attorney's opinion on whether or not we could do that. Uh, certain speech is not sometimes well-received, I understand. Certain speech is not sometimes well-received, I understand that, but this is probably the most protected speech that we have when it's political and it's addressing a public body. So Madam City Attorney, look, I don't want to, I don't want us to get in any trouble. So, you know, please, can you advise us and make sure we understand that, you know, whether we can control content?
Right. Thank you, Councilmember and Mayor and Councilmembers. Yes, I just would like to provide you with a reminder that in litigation, the courts have held that the use of profanity at public meetings, which are considered public forums, is a fundamental right of the speakers and that speakers cannot be banned from speaking. The mayor is authorized, under the rules of decorum, to remind speakers to follow our rules of decorum, and he, as the chair, may consistently do that. The city will also have the right on rebroadcast of these to potentially bleep out inappropriate comments that are being broadcast, but at the meeting itself, the city council cannot stop a speaker from using such language so long as it's not disrupting the meeting.
So, thank you, Madam City Attorney. So the only thing I would recommend to the, to the chair and Mr. Mayor is that, again, we follow that, that practice, just to go ahead and remind folks, but we can't tell them we're going to mute them because that is cutting off their rights to be able to be heard. And whether or not it's something that is acceptable to any one of us, that's not really the rule. So that's all that I wanted to make sure is clear for the record because, you know, look, cutting off a person's right to be heard is, you know, is serious business. So thank you for that. And yeah, the only item I had to be pulled was 25B as an void.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. And just one comment on that. Sometimes I think profanity can be disruptive to the, to the council meeting itself. And if that is the case, then I thought we did have the right to insist that the council business and meeting not be unduly interrupted. So that's all I want to give the clerk. I want, since she kind of is running public comments right now when we go on the phone, I just wanted her to monitor that. And I think we just went and did so without any incident. So I think it was, it was, it all went fine. All right. Any other items on the consent calendar by my colleagues?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Peñalosa. Just wanted to pull, pull item 25C.
Can I have a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve. Second, by Councilmember Peñalosa.
Roll call, roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, let's go on to the next item. Who pulled that one?
25B, Councilmember Sarmiento.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question for staff. I understand that this is, this is a contract with a lab out in San Bernardino to go ahead and, and sample water quality. Is there a reason why we are working with a lab out in San Bernardino? I believe we have a lab here in Orange County. Did we do, you know, did we procure, I guess, different agreements with both of those, both of those labs? I know that the one that we have here at the Orange County Water District in Fountain Valley is, is one that we're a member agency of, and I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, exhausted our search to make sure. And I know I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the RFP and the consulting, the consulting labs that we did procure with. Did we, did we even venture out to OCWD and see if their, their lab was available for this type of testing?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll turn the question over to Public Works Director, Nabil.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and member of the council, Nabil Sabah, executive director of Public Works. Councilman Sarmiento, this, the analysis, the clinical lab of San Bernardino analyzes is the distribution system sampling that we do. Orange County Water District Lab does and continue to do our source sampling. They don't necessarily contract out to cities. The Orange County Water District Lab provides that service as part of the RA replenishment assessment cost of the water that we pay every year. So we do have to go out, and we did this time, and solicit bids for the labs, the lab services or the analysis. And we have used Clinical Lab for a long time, and that's their name, San, the San Bernardino Incorporated, that's the name of it. It's not necessarily where they at, but I'll have to double check.
Okay. No, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that, again, if we, if we are paying into the RA for certain services that the Philip Anthony Lab here at OCWD provides us with, this isn't one of those services, right, that we had to go out because this service is not provided by them? And looking at the three firms or the three labs that did provide an RFP, did we do this just based upon the fee? Because it looks like there is, there's a disparity between the second and third lab that submitted an application to be considered of about, you know, $30,000, but the first two were, were kind of close. But was this done based upon just a straight cost analysis here, or did we take anything else into account?
We based this on the average number of samples that we take every year from the distribution system. The lab does analyze for bacteriological quality, general physical, and mineral analysis in the water, drinking water. And we occasionally use them for wastewater, but not normally. This type of sampling is and can be done by Orange County Water District, but typically cities of our size do not directly contract with Orange County Water District. Orange County Water District Lab can do the analysis on an emergency basis, but typically we go out to a contract lab to do the analysis. And the disparity between the, the pricing is just how much the lab charges for the certain analysis that's being asked.
Okay, I got it. So this, so we have, we have a history with this lab as well, so we've contracted with them in the past. And the fact that they came in, came in as the lowest bidder also probably had some influence on it. So that being said, I'll go ahead and move the item. Thank you for that, Nabil.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, roll, please.
Councilmember Becerra? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio? Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Our next item, Madam Clerk.
Seventy-five, seventy-five C, I'm sorry, twenty-five C, excuse me, pulled by Councilmember Peñalosa.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Protem. My question was mostly on the fiscal year breakdowns and the chart on page 25C dash three for staff and regards to this graffiti contract. The question, I had a couple of questions. I just wanted to get clarification on why some years throughout, I guess, the twenty, why it's, why it's split up versus, if you guys see, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, July, it's a little confusing, those, those boxes, where it's November to June, and then the other ones aren't listed like that? And there's like a different amount on the far right? Can you guys just, Mr., do you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Sabah?
Yes, it does reflect the expenditure on a partial of a year. As you can see, it's not a full year from twenty twenty-one, it's from November to June. So it's not a full year. So our finance department would like to allocate the exact amount of money for the spending. So we have to break down the spending based on the basically number of months that we plan to spend the funds.
I guess what I'm asking is why those particular years are, are broken down like that and not the others?
So sir, I believe it's because their contract runs through and expires in October. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it's only reflecting the new contract starting November to the end of that fiscal year, June, whereas for twenty-one, twenty-two, it's an entire fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, it's an entire fiscal year, and then twenty-three, twenty-four is just taking it to the end of the contract term for October.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And the other question was just in regards to the, the public submitted removal request of graffiti through the MySantana app or our website. I notice it all the time. It comes and goes. It's not consistent in the way that the contractor reports back when submissions have been closed. Sometimes we get the pictures that it's been done, sometimes we don't. Sometimes there's duplica, or sometimes it tells us that it's closed when it's not. And, and the consistency between the, I'm not sure if it's our end of the city app or how it's reading with the graffiti removal contractors and, but it's never been consistent. It's quick, you know, most of the time it's been very fast service and removal of graffiti, which I'm happy with, but just the actual receipts from the company, they're not consistent. Are we working on that, Mr. Sabah?
We're monitoring the, the progress, and we are working on maybe refining the, the interaction between the submission and the acknowledgement of receiving and then closing the, the request. I use it quite often, and I want to say it's 90% accurate. They do get quite a bit of requests, and if there is anything that comes that you're not happy with, just let us know and we will follow up. I know that a lot of requests that come in gets taken care of, is just reporting back and knowing that it's been closed is the issue. But we will work through these, and they get quite a bit of calls at times, especially during the weekends and on Mondays, so.
Okay. And I know that a couple of months when we had this graffiti discussion, there was a brief conversation on the graffiti reporting reward that we used to do actively years ago that I remembered. Are we still doing that? I haven't heard much of it. I don't see a push for it. I don't see any advertisement from PD or Public Works on, you know, reporting graffiti and a reward for, for community members. I see it all the time when I'm driving. I'm not asking for a reward, but you know, I'm, you know, if, we should push, have a campaign instead of just doing something to, to put a Band-Aid on this problem, we should address it in, in ways where we could educate the public about, you know, saying something if you see it and, and ways that we could, we could reward the community for, for allowing us to catch someone doing it or whatnot.
Sure. We do have a graffiti task force, but it's been kind of dormant for a while now, but we will follow up with PD and see that the task force is more active in the next year or so.
And why has it been dormant, Madam City Manager? That might be, I know, you know, it's been dormant since before you came on, but is there, is there somebody from the PD, from the police department? Maybe the chief can answer that or yourself, why it's been dormant? Because I get a lot of emails from constituents, you know, asking about this particular program that had been in place, and then it just kind of, what Mr. Sabah said, went dormant? Is there a reason why that happened?
Sorry, sir, I can't answer that question. I'm not aware. I think it has been dormant since before I arrived. But we do have DC Kaminsky on the line. Ken, is that something you can speak to, a graffiti reward program?
So, Deputy Chief Kaminsky with the police department on behalf of Chief Valentin today. We do continue to offer the reward program. Part of the problems associated with the reward program are people have to be willing to identify, then testify in court against the individuals that they've seen. That tends to have a problem for some of our members of the community wishing to be testifying in court. But the program's still remaining, and I'll take it up with the chief to see if we can't publicize that more.
Okay, thank you. DC Kaminsky.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Sarmiento. Just a quick question for staff. I know this is a, this is a three-year contract that's going to take us out to October 31st of 2023 with, I guess, five one-year extensions. What was the previous term? I know we've contracted with, with GPC since 2014. So was that a three-year with three one-year extensions? How did we get to, to this point? What did the previous agreement look like?
I believe that the last contract was three plus two, three years.
Okay, three.
Or six years. Oh, for total of, the question is, it was for five years, three plus two.
Okay, so now we're going three plus five?
Yes.
Okay. And yeah, I think that, you know, you know, I want to make sure that we have the same, you know, good response time. We're obviously, you know, we're obviously giving some, some additional consideration for these services by going out a little bit further with the five-year option versus a two-year option. You know, is there anything that we garnered in return? I mean, I see the, I see the matrix. I see that they're, you know, the pricing is competitive for us, at least the proposed pricing is competitive for us, reflect, you know, in comparison to some of the other cities. But is there, is there anything in addition that we were able to garner as a result of maybe extending this for an additional few years of the option period?
It'll just give us more flexibility. And again, you know, we can cancel this contract within a 30-day notice. And so we just wanted to have the option of renewing the contract after the first three years. But that's, that's about it, really, Councilmember. They did give us a good, good pricing, so.
No, I see that. I can, I see that you negotiated, you know, good terms. I see that, I see that it's competitive, given, you know, some of the other contracts I have with, I think the closest city here to our size is about, is Long Beach. So in any event, thank you for that answer.
Any other comments?
I'll just make, move the item, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Second, Councilmember Becerra. Second, Councilmember Becerra.
Are there more comments or should we vote? Vote, please. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio? Mayor Protem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item, Madam City Clerk.
Item 60A.
Does anybody have any comments on this item? I guess we're going to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternatives for the General League of Cities Assembly. Any candidates, any volunteers?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to nominate, and I don't know if you'll accept or not, but I'd like to nominate Councilmember Becerra.
Thank you, Councilmember Peñalosa. I would accept that.
I would accept that.
This is Councilmember Mendoza. I would like to nominate myself.
Okay, so we have a voting delegate and up to two alternates.
I would like.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be willing to go ahead and defer to Councilmember Mendoza so she can get her feet wet on a regional body like this. And I would be happy to accept a, an alternate spot with the promise that Councilmember Mendoza won't make me have to come in.
All right. If that's a motion, I'll accept it as a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to designate one more alternate.
Do we have to have, it says up to two.
Yes, that's correct. You don't have to have two.
I, I think we're good with this, but doing the two, you'll figure it out.
That's fine.
But I'm more than happy to add my name as an alternate too, so why not?
And I would like to thank Councilmember Becerra for conceding his position on that board. Thank you very much.
So given that, Councilmember Peña Loza, did you also want to be another, a second alternate?
Sure, if there has to be two, yeah, I'll add my name. That's fine.
There doesn't have to be two, but if you want to add it, I don't think anybody's gonna deny you.
I don't, sure, why not? So I'll make that substitute motion to Councilmember Becerra's.
And I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peña Loza?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Is our next item 65A, Madam Clerk?
That's correct, 65A.
Any comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think Councilmember Mendoza would like to comment also, my fellow veteran. So I remember when we had this discussion a while back about recognizing our veterans and I believe that if we had a, when the, the time is right, we can have maybe a plaque in the Civic Center and a fountain or some kind of statue. That would be something that we could do in the future when we make sure that we have enough money and we get past the COVID-ish crisis. But I also believe that we can start on a registry. If we could go to the public and ask for all veterans for all their, to register. And at the same time, I think Councilmember Mendoza had a great idea about recognizing those veterans who have, you know, acts of gallantry or, or they're recognized for some heroic deed that they did while serving and protecting our country. But I will let her continue on that. So those are two things that I think that I would like to see, something in the Civic Center and a registry being formed so we can have everyone who lives in our city, you know, join that registry and be recognized for serving our country. And that's all for, I have at the moment. If Councilmember Mendoza would like to speak?
Councilmember Mendoza, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, as an army veteran and a very proud resident of Santa Ana, I am fully supportive of this, of this program. It's long overdue in recognizing our military heroes, specifically those who were born or raised here in Santa Ana. And we could trace back that military life and civic duty back to probably the 1800s, to the early wars in, in our history. And so I would like to, along with my colleagues, recognize such service and bravery for the men and women who gave their lives to support and defend our country. And that is one of the deepest honor that we could give anyone who has sacrificed their own, in their own life. I truly believe that in recognition of these, and some of these brothers and sisters in arms who have given their lives in protecting the, our country, it's, it's a great tribute so that their families can see the legacy that they've left behind. And as, as military, as a, I'm deeply honored to have served in our, in our military. And that is the one place where I was instilled with great pride and civic duty for my country. And that is one of the reasons that I'm sitting here today as Councilmember is because I want to bring that kind of pride and honor to our city and to instill, instill that sense of, of pride of living here in, in a city that honors its, its veterans. So I am, I am thrilled that we're going to be having these type of, of recognitions in the future and it's gonna keep going because we have young people from our local high schools in the ROTC program joining the military. And we want to, one day maybe have a, our very own local Santa Ana museum of, of military service. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we will have the, that we're exploring and that we are looking to allocate funds and to make this a, a permanent part of Santa Ana's history. So I am, I'm looking forward to participating and in the registration process and everything else that comes along with creating this wonderful, long-lasting part of our history. Thank you very much.
Councilmember, is there anything that you would like to see, an idea or some kind of project other than the two that you and I discussed briefly that maybe we could do for our veterans here in our city?
Yes, I would like to see the banners along our main streets in recognition of the veterans who have, Santa Ana resident veterans who have lost their lives or who are currently deployed overseas. As many banners as our streets can hold and that is, that we can reasonably maintain and it's not in a, a, a financial burden, but, but rather something of pride where we can maybe even attract tourism in the future, such as the World War II Museum that was just created in, in New Orleans not too long ago. Washington DC has a, a wing that is dedicated specifically for, for Latino veterans. And so we could have our very own museum dedicated specifically to Santa Ana veterans.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Madam City Manager, I know you've been working with a council member some. Do you have a presentation or, or a format you think we ought to follow? I just kind of want this to be somewhat managed so that at the end of the day, you know, we can get some traction and, and understand, you know, from a, you know, financial perspective what it all means. Because I know Mayor Potem said, you know, we understand we have tight budgets right now, but you've given this some thought. What do you suggest?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, this was based on a request from the majority of council to bring back different concepts and ideas to recognize the veterans that reside in our community. There's a very robust staff report and we also do have a presentation that presents multiple ideas that we can achieve this. So what we were looking for tonight is to have you accept the informational report and then let us know the items that most interested you. We would then turn around and return to council after we vetted the ideas that you were interested in and we could present what the costing would be and how we could go about implementing it. So right now, we're just seeking input on the items that you feel you're most interested in. If you'd like, sir, we certainly can give the presentation, but it does sound like that you've already fully engaged in the conversation and identified at least four items that I understand you're interested in.
I believe Councilmember.
Mayor Potem and Councilmember Mendoza, the two veterans, what, what would you like to suggest that we do to proceed?
We would like to, one second, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilmember Solorio has a comment.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like many of the ideas in the staff report and the suggestions by Mayor Potem Vegas and Councilmember Mendoza. I would just ask that along the way, we try to loop in some of our veterans-oriented nonprofits like Native Mexican-American veterans, and there's also other civic organizations that have direct links. So they may have, you know, photos or ideas or suggestions. And I think just because of COVID and costs and everything, you know, things that we could do digitally, you know, via social media, via our website, our TV channel, the digital space that we, you know, are increasingly having along the freeways. I think those things that can be sustainable and that we can consider as ongoing, so you know, quality over other items, but sustainability was important. I appreciate that this effort was brought forward and I think the staff did a great report. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Becerra, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank my colleagues who championed bringing this forward and to staff for bringing forth this presentation and extensive staff report. You know, one, one thing that's mentioned in here is the fact that we do have the Heroes' Hall down at the fairgrounds. And while I appreciate having such a venue to honor our, our veterans and those who've served our country in the military, what frustrates me is we have what is one of their biggest pieces of memorabilia located in our Civic Center and it was allowed to leave our Civic Center. And that was something that, who is now deceased, former San Ana PD Captain D. M. McCoy brought, which was a Vietnam-era Skyhawk plane that sat right there at Broadway and Civic Center Drive. And so my hope as we go forward is that we don't repeat the mistakes of the past, that we figure out a way to make sure that when we honor our veterans, that those monuments, you know, remain here in San Ana. And I think the Civic Center is a wonderful location, as is our regional train station. In regards to the banners, I would like to see us try to reach out to, you know, have staff reach out to local businesses and residents to see if we can get support in sponsoring them. We've all seen these banners in different cities and I think it's a wonderful way to honor those who are, who have or who are serving in our armed forces. I like the idea of including the recognition during the, during our city's annual 4th of July celebration when we have it over at Centennial Park. So I know we didn't have it this year, but when we are able to gather again and celebrate our nation's independence, I think that would be a wonderful place to do that. And I agree with, I believe it was Councilmember Solorio that mentioned some of our nonprofit partners out there who have been supporting our veterans. You know, I'm proud to say that my wife had volunteered with the Veterans Legal Institute quite a few years ago and they do wonderful work to help our veterans who do come across legal challenges and they are an exceptional organization. I think folks and organizations like that, we should really look to and consider supporting. And of course, anything we can do during Veterans Day would be wonderful. But I do want to reiterate my appreciation to my colleagues who brought this forward and I'm looking forward to seeing Santa Ana truly honor our veterans. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think something that we can do right now that really doesn't cost much is the electronic registry that we can put together, a list and of our veterans, have them register. We have a lot of, unfortunately, we have a lot of Gold Star families here where, we have many veterans that are on the, the wall over at Lachakita Neighborhood. And, you know, many of them lost their lives serving our country. But we need to recognize those members and also the members of folks that, who are serving now and who have lost their lives in the last few years because of the fight on terrorism and such. Also about that plane that left the county, well, that did go down to Costa Mesa to complement the Hall of Fame down there. If we would have moved it over here to our side of the Civic Center, you know, we are in the process of trying to redo this side of the Civic Center and there was really no place to put it. And I'm sorry to say that, but, you know, we want to redo our side of the Civic Center to complement the county side and maybe we can bring it back. Or maybe we do something even more special than that, but it would be nice to see the plane back. And so those are my thoughts, the registry electronically and also some plans to have some kind of memorial here where Gold Star families and veterans can come and, and honor our fallen heroes.
Why don't you make a motion for that and then, you know, over the weeks and months to come, staff can return with more options and more input, but at least get, let's get started with what you're suggesting. I think it's a good starting point. Is there a second for, for that?
I'm being told that there is no motion to make at the moment.
Well, there's no motion, there's direction.
Direction, yes, that is the direction.
The primary direction we're giving staff for now.
So yes, that is my direction and I hope for the council to support.
Do I hear anybody opposing that? I, I think it's, I think there's concurrence on this. All right, thank you, Mayor Potem and Councilmember Mendoza. Let's go on to the next item then, please.
It's public hearing 75A. Yes, and if I can announce to the public who would like to make a comment on public hearing items that are not already on the conference call, to take this time to do that, calling 669-900-9128, entering the meeting ID 315965149 pound when prompted. Once a caller has entered the meeting, they will be placed on a holding queue until it's their turn to speak. The queue will close when the mayor announces the, the time to speak, when opening the public comment period. And calls will be reopened at the beginning of each public hearing item. Callers will be prompted to speak in the order received and I will announce the last three numbers of their phone number to inform the caller that they've been unmuted. For the record, the caller is encouraged but not required to provide their name, neighborhood or city if they're not from Santa Ana residents.
All right, right now, let me go ahead and, and before we take any input or comment, let me just ask briefly, is there a staff presentation and recommendation on this? I am, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing and we'll have staff's input be a part of that hearing. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a presentation, Mintai, from our planning and building agency.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council. This is a request for approval of conditional use permit 2019-21 for the property located 813 North Euclid. As you may recall, this item was continued from the meeting of March 17th, 2020 by the city council. As part of that continuance, the city council approved a zone change and adopted the mitigated negative declaration for the project and allow for the construction of a 711. The continuance was on the conditional use permit application, which would allow the business to operate after hours, you know, for a 24-hour operations. The site is located at the southwest, southeast corner of Euclid and Hazard and to the north is Resi- residential, to the east is a religious temple. Residential is also to the south and west. The site is accessed off, off of Euclid and Hazard Avenue. The project, as I mentioned, is a 711 with a service station. The square footage is going to be approximately 3,000 square feet with an 800 square foot canopy consisting of eight pumps located on about a point, about a half acre site, and the purpose operation is 24 hours. Again, the 711 approval project has been approved with the zone change. The request here tonight, as continued by the council, is for the 24 hours operations of the business. Here's a site plan showing the project. This is looking obviously from, from, you know, bird's eye view. The fueling canopy is located course, towards the corner on the northwest corner of the site, and the store is located towards the back southeast corner of the site with the parking in front, as well as a vehicle access both on Euclid and Hazard Avenue. The public outreach background on this initiated beginning back in March of 2018 with the Sunshine Ordinance meeting. Subsequent to that, the project received planning commission recommendation on February 10th of 2020. The City Council, as I mentioned, heard it on March 17th, 2020, approved the zone change and the environmental review for the project, but continued the CUP for the 24 hours operation, advising for the applicant providing a direction to continue the outreach to the community. Subsequent to the March 17th meeting, the applicant conducted two additional outreach, one on, the first was done on April 17th, reaching out to approximately 98 residences within a 300-foot radius. Subsequent to that, staff asked the applicant to conduct additional outreach, extending that perimeter out to 500 feet for an additional 118 residential property for a total of 208 residents that they reach out to within a 500-foot radius. Again, that was done in April and also June of this year. This summarizes the, the activity that they went out in terms of the distance and the locations, as I mentioned. Flyers were provided in detail, both in English and Spanish. They have a petition that was submitted with support for the project consisting of 68 signatures, support letters from proximity to the project as well as the adjacent properties. We have asked the project to establish good neighbor policies to minimize impact to the communities. There's also additional condition for good neighbor conditions, policy, good neighbor conditions actually, in addition to the policies. And the conditions really for the 24 hours operation addresses noise, lighting, circulation, operations. It also has an ongoing maintenance requirement that allows the city to really look at how we can address any type of nuisance complaint immediately through an agreement instead of having to go through your traditional code enforcement process. And with those changes, we believe that the project applicant has done their work to address the council's concern from the continuance meeting of March 17th. The applicant is available for any questions as well as staff from planning. And that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at which the address is on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have four, three, excuse me, individuals that are ready to speak.
Go ahead, let's take their testimony.
Okay, and then before I do open up and unmute the callers, I want to just announce that we did receive emails in addition. We had two San Ana residents in support, and then we had two San, two non-San Ana residents that opposed, and then three that did not disclose or also in opposition. Caller with four seven seven, you have been unmuted. You have three minutes. Please proceed with your comment.
Yes, my name's Dale Helbig, Ward Three. I just wanted to let you guys know that I appreciate all the work you're doing down there and remind everybody in the city to register to vote and also to ensure that they complete their 2020 census. All that will help the city a lot. So appreciate it. Thank you very much, and you guys have a good night.
Thank you. Caller with the number, last three numbers nine seven zero, you've been unmuted. Please proceed with your comment.
Hello, dear members of the City Council. My name is Josh Golcher, and I'm the property owner of the subject property at 813 North Euclid. I bought this property as a development opportunity, which is what my company specializes in, is a niche of taking underserved properties and fully developing them to their maximum capacity. We are pleased to announce that this is an DITA project that the community does support, which has been shown via the signature of support from the immediate residents. Our intended project is on, is one that will bring beauty to this corner. Our specific development will not only, will not only consist of onsite improvements, however, it will also consist of public improvements to include a new sidewalk chino, rebuilding the curb, removing a utility pole, new lighting, and new manscaping. Our onsite development will consist of providing new building with high levels of detail for its aesthetic intricacy and design. This, this project will provide financial benefits to the city as well. Being that this will be a convenience store and a gas station, it will offer high tax dollars to the city. It will also be a new source of jobs both during construction and once construction is finished. And finally, with a significant increase in the property value, this will dramatically increase the property taxes. While we were continuing from our last meeting, we humbly are hoping to obtain approval for our project tonight. It appears that the main item that was on this topic was the hours of operation. The proposed fee store and gas is a use that is permitted by right between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and midnight. And as much as we can currently proceed accordingly, granting us the 24-hour operation would allow the city to impose guidelines and restrictions to accommodate the local constituents' desires. The site has some vacant facilities. I have been working on the site for three years. I am a constituent of the city and support with my property taxes.
Thirty seconds left.
Which have increased as a result. May I request 10 more seconds?
Go ahead, 10 seconds, go ahead.
We have been as flexible as possible to allow for the city to deliver a project that they can stand behind and be proud of. A testament of to that would be the unanimous vote of approval from the planning commission as well as the staff level of recommendation of approval. We want to bring a developer, we want to be a developer that the city can be proud of. We look forward to enhancing the current blight looking property to a brand new nice development in which our local neighbors can enjoy. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers eight eight three, you are unmuted. Please proceed with your comment. Okay, caller, Adon Madrid, I believe you're the applicant. You may proceed with your comment. You have been unmuted.
Um, yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Polito, members of the council and staff. My name is Adon Madrid. I'm with ASI Development. I am the applicant representative. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak. I had a, a long list of, of items that I wanted to address with the council. However, after hearing the comprehensive report provided by staff and hearing the testimony from, from the property owner, I would, I will spare the council regurgitating some of these comments and will remain available to answer any questions that might, that the council might have.
You're a wise man. Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, please continue.
Mayor, we have no other callers.
Okay, so let me bring it back to my colleagues for consideration. Any comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Becerra here?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Thai, I had just a couple of questions for you. So first thing I wanted to ask is, in looking at the site plan, I see that we have light poles located about probably two to three that are located along the perimeter, the eastern and southern sides of the property. Will those lights have some sort of shielding so that the light doesn't drift off onto the adjacent properties, like the Buddhist temple to the east and the residential to the south?
Yes, all lights on the property will have shields that will direct light on the site and not to the adjacent properties.
Okay, thank you. And my only other question or concern, well, one, I want to thank you, Mr. Thai, for hearing our comments from the last meeting. I had concerns about the space in the southeast corner being open and in this area where potentially we can see folks gathering and conducting illicit activities without being seen. So I think that a wrought iron fence that is depicted on the site plan will help us avoid that situation. But what I did want to ask you about is with the trash enclosure on the southern property line, it seems like it's in an awkward location. I just want to ask you, is it possible without us having to take any action here tonight to try to lock it in? Because I, I hate the idea of us trying to plan from the dais or remotely and virtually at this point. But is there a way for you to work with the applicant on the location of the trash enclosure that's currently situated on the southern property line?
We definitely can, Councilman. That is a condition. We had similar concern and it's been incorporated as condition number seven of the resolution for the applicant to work with staff on relocation of the trash enclosure.
And, and I have one last question, Mr. Thai, and that is, as far as the walls on the southern and eastern walls, one thing I think that really helps in deterring graffiti, it's not perfect, but it's a, it goes a long way, and that is vines adorning the walls so that, you know, you have a nice green wall. It's environmentally helpful and it's also, again, a good deterrent. Is that something that will be conditioned on this project, should it go forward?
That absolutely can be done.
Okay. And, and I, what I want to ask you, Mr. Thai, is that, you know, what I've seen on some of these projects is you get what looks like one single vine, and I know maybe there's hopes and prayers that the thing's going to one day blossom and cover an entire wall, but six months, a year later, it's just that single vine. So if we're going to incorporate that on this project, I would like to see a true genuine green wall that covers the wall so we don't have any canvas for folks that want to graffiti it.
I will work with staff to increase the density of the planting so that it's closer and higher density than, or the initial planting.
Perfect. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Thai.
Thank you. Other comments by councilmembers? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, Councilmember Peñalosa.
Thanks for that. If no comments, roll call vote.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yeah.
Motion carries seven zero.
There we are now on item 75B.
That's correct. And if members of the public who'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, so members of the public who'd like to make a comment, the line is still open until the mayor opens a public hearing item.
All right, so let me go ahead and bring our attention to this item. I think this is just a weed abatement, $5,761.32. Is there a staff presentation? If not, I'll just go open up the public hearing for the public.
Mayor, we do have a very brief staff presentation as it is fairly self-planned.
Go ahead, I'll open up the public hearing, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual notice hearing process that we are required to take in order for us to recover costs through our dangerous abatement program of dangerous building and abandoned buildings. It's the resolution affirming for this fiscal year on costs that we expended, and as part of this process, we will be able to file with the auditor controller for the county warrants to recover the costs. This program provide us with the ability to step in and address properties that have dangerous conditions where property owners are either not acting in, in terms of the appropriate measure to abate the situation or do not take any action at all. We're able to come in, abate the action, and then also through this process, we'll be able to recover our costs for those actions. And we do that through us providing the county with information on the costs, and that will be placed as a lien on the property, and through that process, we'll be able to recover the costs. I just want to share with the council that while the total cost is approximately seven, 5,700 this year through this noticing, noticing process, one of the property owner has already started making payments. So this process not only allows us to recover the cost, but it also acts as an incentive for property owner to repay the cost. So this property at 1234 St. Anne has already started the process of repayment. However, we'll continue with this process so that we still have the authorization. And once we receive full payment, we would not send this property to the county. The second property is 2639 West First Street. Again, this is a situation where we have to step in, board up the properties, and as you can see, the property was left in quite a condition that is both dangerous and a nuisance. With that concludes staff's report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, councilmembers, any thought or comment? Mr. Mayor? Any members of the public that want to speak on this, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any members of the public.
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration.
Make a motion to approve, Councilmember Viegas.
Second, Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you for that. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yeah.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. I believe that brings us to item 85A. First of all, Madam City Manager, do you have any comments on this before we engage?
Um, no, sir. This is an opportunity for you to discuss among your colleagues, and I stand ready for direction.
All right, I think this was requested by Councilmembers Peñalosa and Sarmiento.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Councilmember Peñalosa. I requested 85A along with Councilmember Sarmiento to discuss and consider directing the clerk of the council to allow for public comments on agenda items via telephone as well as in person in an effort to encourage civic engagement while the local state of emergency due to COVID-19 is in place. So I had initially put this on the agenda before we had gone back to virtual meetings again because it was important for me to, you know, protect the public health of our constituents and had been the hotbed of the county in COVID cases. I want, and, you know, I thought it was irresponsible of us to ever, you know, make constituents come into the city hall to make public comments in person. So I know we went back to virtual meeting, but given that, you know, we jump back and forth so frequently, I wanted to have this discussion here with, with all of us, you know, in, in public to come up with a firm, you know, way to have public comments and allow them. I personally feel that we should, in the meantime, while the state of emergency is in place by the governor- is in place by the governor, I, my personal opinion would be to allow, you know, public comments via phone. And, you know, for those that wish to do it in person as we allowed two weeks ago with the setup outside, you know, to allow that too. You know, it's to each their own, but to give the public options, that is where I want to make sure that we're transparent and allow for the public to make those comments in any way that they feel comfortable in. With that said, those are my comments. I want to make sure that we keep phone comments in place as long as the state of emergency from the governor is in place. I don't, you know, just as, the last time that the governor started scowling back, that's when we decided that in-person comments was okay. And I don't think that's right because of the high number of cases. So with that said, this is merely, you know, to allow for civic engagement and to protect the public health. Those are my comments. Not sure what my colleagues feel, but I would like to, and also to help the city clerk out because she also needs clear direction on what our preferences are. And that is it. I'll defer to Councilmember Sarmiento.
Thank you, councilmember. No, I think you said it well. And this was done, you know, in advance of the clerk of the council's decision to go virtual and allow for a phone-in option as well. And I think, you know, in all fairness, I think the in-person option that we employed at the prior meeting was done to try to improve the public's ability to address the council. Unfortunately, right after that, the governor issued his more strict orders to not gather. And that's when we started seeing the numbers in San Ana and all over the county and, you know, throughout Southern California spite. And what's unfortunate is that we continue to be living through a very difficult surge, especially here in San Ana where we have about 5,500 cases. And that is a, you know, we are unfortunately leading the county in the number of positive COVID cases. I don't see this going away anytime soon, so we did want to leave this on as a discussion item so we can give the clerk of the council as well as the city manager, but also that our director of IT to be able to access support to make sure that the public's opportunity to be heard be protected because we're dealing with two issues that we have to balance intelligently. One is, you know, the public health and not endangering anybody who wants to come and address the city council while at the same time making sure that we protect the public's right to be heard. And I think by having a, you know, a well, you know, managed system, and I think tonight's has been, you know, really well done. So I think we have to, we have to give, you know, compliments when they're due. And I want to thank the clerk. I think the public was able to address us. I think they came in clearly. I don't think there was much of a delay. But I also wanted to, you know, I know that in our CARES Act money as well, maybe there's some funding for support, technical support, whether it's to the clerk or whether it's to the IT director because those are all recoverable costs, in my opinion, because they are the result of this pandemic. So that is a criteria for us to be able to get cost recovery on those. But we know that the public does want to address us. There are some very sensitive issues. We are in a very, very, you know, dangerous area right now in the city just because, you know, folks have, you know, exposure and have some, you know, immune system deficiencies and we have to be sensitive to those. So to the extent that we can't provide options, as was said by the council member, I think it's a good thing. But I just wanted to make sure that the, both the city manager, or excuse me, the city manager, the city clerk, and the IT director understand that they should be able to employ some additional support if they need to make sure that we do this. And one last thing is I know that there are cities that don't even allow for public comments. So you have cities like Anaheim that are as large as ours. And I think they do all their public comments by email. So we do have to, I think, you know, also be proud of the fact that we're trying to make sure that as challenging as it is, we're trying to do what we can to make sure we protect that the public's right to be heard. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me jump in for a moment if I may. I know Councilman Sarmiento, and I've heard the way you run some meetings here at the Water District. I know this is a little bit different in terms of the volume and maybe the fashion of some of the speakers, but I think it is important to be accessible. In our reality right now, I don't think we really should encourage people to come in person. So I think it would be a mistake to offer that option because we're, you know, going against the governor's order and we're also implicitly, I believe, leading them to believe that it's safe to do so. So I think for the foreseeable future, and I would venture to guess that this is for the rest of the year, that we're going to have to stay virtual and going to have to kind of do business the way we did it tonight. If somebody can make a different case, please make it. But if not, I think this is going to have to become the new normal until we're out of the pandemic. And again, I just don't see a big change anytime soon. Any other thoughts or comments by councilmembers?
Well, just to answer you, Mr. Mayor, so I don't disagree. I think that what the councilmembers' comment, what Councilmember Penialloso, I believe, was saying is that when it's safe, I think, you know, we do want to make that opportunity available because, you know, my hope is that we're going to be much better at protecting our public health and we bring these numbers down and we make that option available. But until that's not safe, you know, certainly that's why there is, I guess, more an encouragement that we improve our phone-in virtual access by the public to have them address us. Just as, just that the governor has relaxed the brown act for, you know, some of us not to come to meetings, we need to make sure that, you know, the public has that same opportunity to address us and be home safely or wherever they are to be able to access the council meeting. So yeah, by no means are we saying that we should encourage nor, you know, try to give a false sense of hope or a false sense of security that, you know, it is safe to come to a council meeting. That's why we want a really well, strong, sophisticated way for folks to be able to access the meeting remotely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, that is correct. And I'm sorry, the way I worded that was a little confusing. But I, Councilmember Sarmiento is correct. I'm not encouraging, you know, us to allow for in-person comment right now when cases are so high and the governor keeps putting different restrictions on the state. But, you know, moving forward for as long as this is in place, we should allow for that public over-the-phone option, even when the governor starts lifting restrictions because, like I mentioned, San Ana is the hotbed of the county and our cases are extremely high and they were two weeks ago. And we were allowing people to come in in person and taking that phone option away. And a lot of people, there's a lot of people out there that are not, you know, that don't feel safe doing things just yet, that are still, you know, playing it safe and being cautious. And giving them that opportunity to comment by phone would go a long ways. I personally do not care for the profanity. I don't agree with it, but, you know, I will fight for their right to say it because at the end of the day, it is their first amendment right. And again, I don't care if people are calling in. Again, I don't care if people are calling in from Australia. I mean, as a councilwoman, I mentioned two weeks ago, because again, wherever they're calling in, that is their right to call in. We are a public entity and we are public servants. So I just, the only change moving forward that I would like to suggest is that we allow for the phone comments. And I know it's something that we're working, it's a work in progress, to open it at every agenda item like we had previously done as if we were operating normally. Because currently I'm getting text messages from constituents that they want to comment on 85A and they want to comment on 85B. I mean, we've done it for decades where public comment is at the end and everybody gets to comment. So if we allow a period where at least we could, you know, not just notify the public that we're going to just do public comment in the beginning for every agenda item and that's it, you know, it doesn't give, people are used to doing it one way and we're changing them on them frequently, and I don't think that's appropriate. So, but yeah, I did not, I didn't want to encourage people to come in, you know, to speak in public in person, but as long as we make those options available for them.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Becerra here.
Yes, Councilmember Becerra.
I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Sarmiento and Councilmember Penialloso, for bringing this item forward. You know, my first action when I became a planning commissioner was to try to ensure that the public knew where we were meeting. We were meeting in two different locations depending on the meeting. We had, one point we were in the council chambers, another point we were in another part of city hall. And it just, it felt like it was deliberately confusing. So I agree with the idea of anything that we can do to be a leader in Orange County and beyond in transparency, I think is a wonderful thing and I appreciate my colleagues bringing it forward. What I do want to clarify though is that, you know, when we, or when our clerk had set up for folks to come in and comment in person, this was right before, you know, the spike, the spike that we're experiencing now was taking place. So I wanted to say that I think that our clerk was trying to address the situation. She had a system that was not working and thankfully it is working now. And I thought it went very well tonight. So I want to thank our city clerk for helping run this meeting in a very efficient way while still providing an opportunity for our residents to voice their concerns regarding our agenda items. But one thing that I just want to share with Councilmember Penialloso, you know, it's, while you're hearing a lot of constituents, you know, express their concerns about where the public comment portion of the agenda is located. You know, it's funny, a lot of folks are appreciative that we're now having the public comments at the beginning of the meetings because for a long time, they were at the end. And you're right, a lot of people got used to that. But it wasn't something that they welcomed and it wasn't something that they really enjoyed, at least a lot of folks that I'm speaking to. So I really appreciate how this meeting is run or has been running tonight and having the comments at the beginning on all the items except for the public hearing items, I think is a way that balances efficiency but still provides that opportunity for folks to call in and express what they feel about these agenda items. I think obviously, I think it goes without saying that we don't want to have people coming in to make comments at city hall during the spike in the pandemic at this time. When it is safe, of course, we want to open our chambers. I think Councilmember Sarmiento will always affectionately refer to our chambers as the People's Hall. And I agree, I think it's somewhere where we want to, at some point, have folks coming in and addressing us face-to-face. But right now, obviously, it's important for them to do it via the phone. And I think that, you know, well, I would say I appreciate our clerk and our IT staff for fixing the equipment and making sure that our residents do have the ability to safely call in on the agenda items. So again, I want to express my appreciation and thank our two colleagues for bringing this item before us. I do support the idea of continuing the telephone comments. I like the way it's being done now at the beginning of the meeting on all the items except for the agenda items. That's my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Again, I think we don't have much of a choice right now. It's the only way that we can do it safely. But if there's no more comments, let's go on to item 85B as a buoy. Who had that item?
Really quick, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Penialloso. Can I just, can we have the city clerk kind of maybe state what, because I don't think there was a majority direction on what's going to happen with the public comment. So I wanted to state what is going to happen in the next couple of months until the state of emergency is in place.
So what I have is we're going to continue on the virtual comments only. We're not going to look into the in-person until it does appear where it is safe. And I think that is a long way from now. And I think having it at the beginning of the meeting, with the exception of public hearing items, will continue on. If we keep changing it on the residents, as you said, it is confusing. And I am in communication with a lot of community organizers, a lot of residents. A lot of numbers that I got tonight, I'm calling them back. I'm being proactive about making sure that we can address any issues that they're experiencing so that way they don't continue to be confused about what they're doing. I have been getting a lot of residents telling me that they prefer to have it at the very beginning of the meeting and it's much easier because you don't know when the cutoff is and you don't know when they're wanting to speak for what item. So having them speak at the very beginning of the agenda has been working successfully, with the exception of public hearing items.
So they, and then they have until a certain hour to call in, right?
Yeah, so we opened up the line today at 5:00 PM and I had about a dozen people call in today. A couple of them called in just to practice to make sure that they felt comfortable with the process. They had no comment to provide tonight and then they went ahead and hung up. But all of the other ones waited online since 5:00 PM. I spoke to them, made sure that they understood that we're not virtually raising our hands. We provided communication not only through our subscriber email list for agenda subscribers, but we also submitted several, I think maybe two or three different social media platforms where we went ahead and continuously provided information since Thursday, the day of publication for the agenda. We updated our website. And I will follow back with any of the residents who had any issues at all. And I have every one of their numbers, so that way I can get that communication.
And last question, what is the last time, the cutoff time, where callers could call in and if they want to speak on any of the items?
So that varies because, as you know, there is no way to predict an exact time of when we're going to land on a certain item. And this particular item is the public comment period. And because we don't know when that's going to happen, the best practice is for people to start calling in before the meeting starts, making sure that they're in the log and in the speaker queue. And again, it's open right at 5:00 PM and then it closes right when the first speaker starts speaking during the public comment period, which is the same practice that happens during a regular council meeting when we were having in-person meetings. So as soon as the meeting started, the last speaker card, that's when we provided that information to the mayor so that he can, as a presiding chair, he can go ahead and call the speakers. And it ended right then and there, right at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk.
All right, 85B, Mayor Potem Viegas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So 85B is discussing, consider directing the city manager to include the CARES Act spending plan, a program to assist working families with childcare needs as a result of the governor's closure of the in-class instruction for schools in our region. And the reason I bring this up is just for discussion to see if there's a way that maybe we can help parents. You know, this COVID situation is, we're not sure when it's going to end. I know they're working on a vaccine. Every week there's a new, there's something new in the news, progress, setbacks, you know, et cetera. But what hasn't changed is that there's parents, families that are struggling. You know, work is low. They have to make a decision whether to stay home with their kids because they're not in school or, you know, got to work. And the thing is, you might ask yourself, well, during the summer times, you know, they send the kids to grandma or grandma comes over and watches the children or the aunt or the cousin, somebody responsible comes over. But right now, everybody's staying put, especially our senior citizens because everybody's trying to protect themselves and rightfully so. But parents find themselves in a tough position when, you know, hey, I got bills to pay. I have the rent to pay. I have all kinds of things. I need to get back to work because, you know, life doesn't just stop and the bills are moving along. So one of the things that I, you know, I was thinking that maybe we could help with some childcare for those that want to use it because they need to go to work, because they don't have anyone to watch their children or, you know, they can't call on that one relative because, you know, they're, everybody's a little bit afraid. And so I was thinking, well, maybe if there was some childcare or a pilot program or something we can do, a facility where we can even hire some of our own employees back to help out. You know, there are childcare facilities that are operating and maybe we can help out these parents that want to get back to work because a lot of people are struggling with having to stay home and watch their children and children. children not in school. I know it's a little tough, but it's every individual family's, uh, decision on how they're going to go about it. Not everybody would, uh, buy into it, and, and that's okay. But there's some families who don't really have many folks to help them. So, that is something I wanted to discuss with my colleagues today and gather their thoughts and see what, uh, what they're thinking. So, that is, uh, what I'm proposing is we could have the staff, the city manager, maybe start a pilot program with some childcare facilities, and to see if we can help out some of our residents that want to get back to work. And that is, uh, my comment, Mr. Mayor. I welcome, uh, any comments from my colleagues.
Let, let me ask a couple of questions if I may.
Sure.
Are you thinking, uh, this would come out of some of the short-term money that we have to spend in the next few, uh, weeks?
Absolutely, because it would be from the-
Or do you see this potentially going on into the future?
Yes, I had a, a conversation with the city manager, and she believes we can use some of the CARES money on this.
Um, Madam City Manager, would you like to comment?
Um, certainly, sir. Thank you. So, I would look to the state. They have provided, uh, subsidized childcare early on because of COVID to first responders, so that those first responders could still show up at work and have their children taken care of. So, I would, I would first look to that to see if there's a way that we could duplicate it and provide those services for the residents that are impacted by COVID in our community. I do believe, um, we, we will have dollars available to do that.
So, that, that was-
Well, I, does anybody have, uh, comments and opposition to that concept?
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Penalosa.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, and I just wanted to ask the city manager, uh, in regards to what the state, uh, funds available, um, because I noticed that even at, you have it, uh, plastered in, in our elevators here at city hall, that, um, the governor and the state is offering funds to essential workers regardless of income, whether they, it doesn't matter how much they make. I wasn't sure, it wasn't too clear, but I know there's a lot of resources available. Um, I'm not too, uh, comfortable with, with off, offering any kind of pilot program or facilities within the city that would provide childcare, because that's, you know, brings me back to, you know, this is why our community centers are unfortunately closed, and schools are closed, is because we can't have, uh, areas where, where a group of kids are, are hanging out with it, with an adult because of the, of the pandemic. And, and I want to thank, um, the Mayor Protem for bringing this forward, because it is a good thing, um, and it is a much needed thing in our community, but I'm just trying to understand the logistics of it, or how, you know, because I know there are state funds available, uh, for this particular purpose, not just for first responders, uh, if I'm not mistaken. Can you touch on that?
I don't know the specifics of the program, Councilmember, but I do know that it first started for first responders and then it more for essential workers. So, at this time, I don't, I don't know the parameters. I could find out that information and report back to the city council.
Yeah, maybe if we could find out what, what the, what the money and direct resources available from the state are currently, uh, because from what I read on those, those flyers is that it was, uh, available to anybody regardless of income, you know, childcare service, uh, or, 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 uh, resources available. So, if we could, if we could look into that, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mayor Protem. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Councilmember Jose Salorio.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I wanted to thank, uh, Mayor Protem Viegas for bringing this forward. Uh, I think in addition to seeing if there are any kind of COVID compliant, uh, pilot programs in other parts of the state, I think it would be worth devaluing, see if it works for us. Another kind of been, you know, on and off on many of these programs, so I don't know if they're active or not, but when and if they're available, we should look at it for our community. Uh, but, but there are also maybe partnerships with, uh, other nonprofits. I know the Boys and Girls Club were early on, you know, seeking those kinds of opportunities in our city and others, for healthcare workers and other essential workers, and so maybe there might be, you know, some kind of partnership with them. Because the reality is, sometimes even though we ourselves may want to offer these services, there are other nonprofits that maybe can do it, uh, quicker and faster. Um, and then I think there's also an overlay with parent, parents' needs of, uh, again, you know, tech access and Wi-Fi and just any kind of, you know, programming or help. Also, a lot of really daycareing occurs, you know, in the homes, you know, the abuelita is there, or, you know, or somebody is watching, you know, the, the children maybe while people are working there remotely. Uh, so I think we can do more support there. And then finally, uh, we just, I think, just need to have a sense of urgency and get these programs and dollars out, you know, whether it be this COVID funding, twenty-eight million, the youth fund, you know, seven million, and I know, just do it smartly, but let's start rolling some stuff out, because there's a lot of need out there. Thank you.
Other comments, Councilmembers?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Sarmiento.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I think, um, you know, the, this eighty-five B, even though it, it is kind of narrow on, um, something that could be, uh, could be funded by the CARES Act money, I think it, it, you know, begs the question for a larger, um, discussion having to do with just, you know, the CARES Act funding, and I think that that's, um, important for us to consider, because there, again, providing relief, uh, there's so much need at all levels right now. So, I think that the proposal that was, um, presented to us at the last meeting by staff was a really good start, by the way. There were some line items in there that obviously had to do with, you know, funding for testing, serology, rental assistance, uh, small business grants, and I think what it does is it really does beg the question for us to sit down and talk about what are the priorities and what's the most urgently needed, right? And, um, I don't want us to think that this is, you know, some sort of, um, you know, um, fund that we can go, all go out and start promising people, uh, certain things. I think that this is a discussion that we need to have with the city manager and amongst us as a body to make sure we prioritize and we, um, also dedicate some of these as, as quickly as possible. There are things that, um, you know, keep hearing about, um, you know, uh, the moratorium that is set to expire at the end of this month. Uh, you know, my suggestion would be for us to consider, uh, having the city manager extend that moratorium to run concurrently with the governor's order, which, um, would expire at the end of September. Um, the line item that was proposed by the, um, staff on rental assistance is a very, very robust, strong start, because it's a three-million-dollar line item that could be augmented with CDVT monies of eight-hundred-thousand, making it close to four million, which is more commensurate with, I think, what we need to have. Um, I think, you know, there is a line item that was proposed for, um, uh, PPE, having, you know, hand sanitizers, and it, you know, what was interesting is I know I walked some of the bus lines with, uh, somebody here who provides services to the unsheltered, and having some hand sanitizer stations, um, you know, in certain places where there is high volume would do a big, um, would be a big help, because we know that these folks, um, don't have a place to, um, uh, uh, maintain proper hygiene, and what happens if that goes unaddressed, and it just continues to spread. Our numbers, as I mentioned, are so high. Us, uh, uh, you know, we, we're at about fifty-five hundred. Anaheim is at about five thousand. There's almost thirty thousand cases in the county, so we represent more than thirty percent just between the two, the two cities and the eight zip codes. So, again, I would, you know, ask us, um, you know, if this is something that we need to have a recurring discussion on, and I think it is, one that we get an update at every meeting, or even, um, a, as necessary as I believe it is, because it is a public health crisis that is, has its epicenter in our city, we should be meeting even in between our regular meetings, uh, just to get updates, just to be able to move more quickly, because what I hear consistently from all of us is that this money, when it comes, because I know it's not going to come in a lump sum, I believe it'll arrive in increments, how do we deploy it as quickly as possible for those problems that we have that are immediately necessary? So, whether it's, you know, um, uh, you know, uh, you know, the, the testing, the serology, whatever, and one of the line items I think that is missing here is the, uh, eviction defense fund for those bad actors that are trying to evict people, uh, during this time. So, that is something that I know we have a good template for because we've done it with the deportation defense fund. This wouldn't be a long, a, 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 a high price cost, but it would prevent those that are being harassed and, uh, you know, uh, by landlords who are using self-help to be able to go ahead and defend themselves and have an opportunity for, uh, strong due process in court. So, uh, when that, when that comes about. But, um, you know, uh, I just think it begs for a larger discussion. I think it has to be something that we, uh, consider, maybe Mayor Protem's idea, other ideas that we know are bubbling up, and we, we hear that there's just so much need, and we need to provide, um, good, um, intelligent responses. Uh, those are my comments. Thank you.
Let, let me, uh, jump in if I may, um, Councilmember Sarmiento, because I, I agree with you that, um, you know, we need to, uh, be discussing this on a, on a regular basis. What I would suggest is maybe the city manager, we just put it on as, uh, an ongoing agenda item, um, and she can give us an update, and if we have suggestions or items that we think ought to be discussed, let's bring them up. Um, if it becomes too much, maybe we have to have special meetings. That, um, I'd be happy to call those if it's warranted. Um, I'll tell you that what I've found is, these problems are so difficult, um, when you think you have a solution to something, um, sometimes you really don't, because the, the dollars just are nowhere near enough to really tackle the problem. So, I tend to spend a lot of time, I look at them over and over and over again, you know, the dollars and, and where staff is recommending they be spent, and then what, you know, I, you know, kind of sets the outcome to be in, and, and, and then I go back and I rethink it, because there's new problems. Let me give you one that I ran into here recently. I'm running into a lot of people that said, look, you wanted to do testing, now we're starting to get testing, but we're testing positive, and we're losing our jobs, because at work, nobody wants to have you working if you're positive. Um, so now what do we do? Um, and of course, people are told, well, you know, go home and quarantine, you don't have any symptoms, uh, you'll probably get old red, go home and quarantine. They go home, they quarantine, now the whole family has it. And a lot of our spread, and, and look, we all need to not do the meetings and wear masks and social distance, but a lot of the spread right now is occurring inside residences, inside apartments. It's occurring, you know, within families and very close friends. And I don't know, you know, what we do there. I mean, I've been on the phone trying to figure out, can we get, uh, potentially additional beds down at the Orange County Fairgrounds, so that if identify people that want to quarantine, you know, maybe we have access to that. But I'll give you another problem. I've found some people who have quarantined, and they can't take it. They don't want to be away from everybody for a long time if they don't have to, and they immediately want to come back, start seeing their loved ones, they, they, it, it just becomes a real burden. So, it's like every time you try to solve something, this pandemic is really, really, really tough. Um, and, and we just need to do all of the above, um, as strong as we can, and, um, and, and really trying to make our numbers come down. Remember, last time we met, I predicted we'd be at five thousand. Um, uh, right now, I'm telling you, we're on our way to ten thousand, and I don't know, you know, how to stop it. Uh, you know, we're, you know, talking to the, you know, the health director at, uh, UC Irvine, director of public health, I'll tell you, the county of Orange, they don't have a plan. They do have enough money. Back in March, they received five-hundred-and-fifty-four million dollars. Uh, you know, i- if you just hit a pro rata, which is why form that mayor's group and try to get money from the county, we would have received over sixty million dollars back then. And, and believe me, we'd be doing something with it by now. They, they still are going at a snail's pace. And, and meanwhile, you know, we have a hundred, um, over a hundred and thirty, I think it's a hundred and thirty-eight deaths now as of today in Santa Ana. Uh, we're going to be at six thousand cases by tomorrow. Um, and, and the county, they are, you know, doing very, very, very little. So, um, I suggest, uh, maybe the city manager can put out a, a more detailed, uh, update, you know, for the city council and the community, but just some government update, and then let's maybe, um, you know, we consider either a special meeting, uh, or adding this to our agenda in two weeks. But, uh, right now, it might be a good time, but I, but I'd like to see, um, not only ideas, but let's do as much homework as we can on our ideas and ask the question, where does it lead? You know, what next? Does it really solve a problem, or does it cause another problem that we also have to have a solution for? And, and I'll tell you, we're not the only city suffering from this. Um, I, I'm telling you, California is going to surpass New York very quickly in terms of the total number of cases, and of course, you can say, well, we're bigger. Um, but look, we, we were doing a lot better. We've always been bigger. Um, I believe New York got it earlier because it came from Europe, and they weren't, you know, they had their guard down, and, and we put our guard up in the beginning. Our promise been, as a state, we put our guard up, and we thought we were doing well, and then we put our guard down. Um, and now it's hitting us very hard, and we always have known that Santa Ana is, you know, you know, very susceptible to this. You know, we've always been a tumbleweed, uh, as are, you know, portions of Anaheim. And, and it's not all of Santa Ana, by the way. When you look at, uh, at the counts within the zip codes and, and then more information within, um, it's, it's not the entire city at the same level. Um, but, but we're not going to be well and healthy and safe until we help get our residents, uh, through this, especially our lower-income residents that, you know, can't, uh, quarantine, um, that need the job, um, just, uh, you know, to live, to eat. Um, and, 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 and so, um, you know, maybe let's thank Mayor Protem for putting this on, but, you know, this is a much, 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 much bigger issue. Um, I think our twenty-eight million dollars are not nearly enough, um, and, but that's all we've got, um, and we need to deploy them, um, quickly so that it can make a difference, and we need to deploy them, uh, as effectively as we possibly can. Um, and that's a very, very, very tall order. But why don't, um, let me, uh, reach out to several of you, um, and let's see if, um, either a special meeting is in order, or if you all have ideas that you want to add, let's run them by the city manager. I know she's working every day in one form or another on this, and right now, I don't think it's the issue of the day. I think it's the only issue. Um, you know, this issue, um, you know, will have ramifications potentially, you know, for many, many years to come. Um, so, uh, additional comments or thoughts from my colleagues?
Mayor Salido, this is Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes, please, Councilmember.
Yes, I, I know that the governor directed the schools to look in, into childcare as well, so if the city and the school district work together, I know that we can come up with solutions to this childcare issue. And currently, um, the board is waiting for an update from the superintendent, so I think this is a, a very good, um, program where the city and the school district can work to find a solution to this problem, and, uh, and it'll be beneficial to our residents and our children.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you for that suggestion.
If I can say something?
Um, additional comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Mendoza. You know, I was thinking that maybe if we did do something, that the school district could help us with their meal program, and, um, you know, just to, to see how this goes. You know, as a parent, and some of the council members, you know, do not have children, but if you're, if you're at home and you have kids, and they're not going to school, and they're at home, and you have to go to work, I mean, it's, it's a tough one. There's no clear answer to it. Every family has their story, and every family has their challenges, uh, and they have to make their decisions. And I think this is something that could help, because not everyone gets financial assistance. Not everyone's receiving money, uh, from the government. And so, you know, there's folks that, uh, you know, they're really in a, in a tough spot. Do I go out and go to work and see what I do with my kids, or do I just stay here and, and, you know? do with my kids, or do I just stay here and and, you know, and hang on to, you know, whatever I I can? So this is just something I want to look into, and I I think it's worth exploring more. And I want to thank my colleagues for their comments, those that were for it and against it as well. Both are, you know, very valuable for us to continue the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, councilmembers. Let me go on to city manager comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three items tonight, and actually, the first one is an update on our planning efforts. I know this is one of our highest or the highest priority. Unfortunately, our city does remain the hardest hit in the county, and our county is the second hardest hit in the state, just behind LA County. So I wanted to give you an update of our planning activity that is happening behind the scenes, and I I think the robust dialogue on 85B. And I know several of you have individually reached out to me and referred different vendors and ideas. Please keep them coming. I really like the idea of having a routine you receive and file, so that I can keep you updated. And I do think there probably is a need for a special meeting, since you are dark for your first meeting in August. But just to let you know what we've been working on, we have an interdepartmental team that's working diligently to help with the critical steps of the spending plan, which includes setting parameters, getting proposals, executing contracts, identifying and designing a dashboard to track our performance. Prioritization has been given to the tasks that require the most lead time, as our window for expenditures is very, very limited. And once again, thank you to all of you that have referred resources. And I just want to let you know, when you refer a resource, whether it's for PPE, whether it's for testing, we take it under consideration and we thoroughly vet it. We're using our EOC procurement process to do all of that. Some of our notable planning efforts to report include informally seeking proposals for mobile testing with priority given to FDA-approved test kits and lab processing turnaround times. We are finalizing contract terms with UCI and Waterline Chemical Company. We're researching the availability of a trilingual nurses hotline for all of our residents, and we also are busy lining up isolation units. We have procurement teams that are assigned to accumulate all needed supplies, such as supplies for household COVID-19 kits, including not only masks and hand sanitizers, but also household cleaning products. We're developing the protocol to deploy all three types of assistance, and that is the rental, business, and bill assistance. Discussions are already in place with over 40 different landlords to more expeditiously deploy the rental assistance. We also are in the process of assembling the compliance ambassadors that we talked about, and a mobile resource unit to directly visit the hard-hit areas to provide education and the resources. We're also establishing a protocol to make sure that our expenditures do meet the US Department of Treasury guidelines, and we don't get in trouble in that. So that is a very brief update of all the things that we're working on behind the scenes. We did finally get confirmation from the state just today, about an hour before our meeting started, that we will expect to receive our first allocation of money by the end of this month, and the amount will be four point, roughly 4.8 million. They are giving us a sixth at a time of the $28.6 million. So other two items, really briefly, is I am presenting this week, Thursday at 7:00, to the Comm Link Virtual Community Meeting. They have requested an update on COVID-19 and CARES Act spending plan. And any participant that wants to listen in, you do need to register ahead at GoToWebinar. The very last item, on Friday, July 17, staff had a virtual Sense Oteria, a twist on the Mexican bingo game. It was done part of the educational campaign to inform Santa Ana residents about the importance of completing the 2020 Census. The virtual game was broadcast live on various media channels and on our YouTube channel, and it had overwhelming response. We had hundreds of Santa Ana households that signed up and participated in the virtual game from all throughout the city. Staff has notified the 10 winners, and they have $100 Visa gift cards that will be delivered to the winners later this week. This was a fun game, and it was COVID-19 friendly. It was so successful that the staff will be conducting another one next Friday, July 31, at 4:00 p.m. And for more details, you can visit our website, santa-anna.org/2020census. And I want to do a big thank you. This effort was led by Daisy Perez of the city manager's office. And that's all, sir.
Thank you. Look, I'm going to go down to the councilmember comments, and I'll just go down here by alphabetical order. Councilmember Becerra, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to emphasize what I said earlier at the beginning of this meeting, when we had the gentleman from the registrar of voters here. I want to make sure that staff works with the ROV to increase the amount of ballot drop-off locations south of First Street in our city. I really hope that there's a way to double, triple the locations that we have now. I mean, that's not really a tall feat, given that we have one that's there at the ROV itself, and one that's hopefully going to happen at Memorial Park. So I really want to ask our clerk and our Parks and Rec Director to work with the ROV to hopefully increase the number of those locations. One thing that actually, information that came to us as our meeting began tonight, was there's a gentleman that has been released from confinement after 20 years in a mental hospital. I want to thank our district attorney for notifying the community of the state's desire to have this person released. I mean, this is a person who has testified to having sexual and homicidal fantasies with young boys. Now, currently, he's not on probation or parole, and his requirement to register as a sex offender for life was, for some reason, removed by the state in 2005. So just earlier today, again, right before the meeting began, our police department informed our community through social media that he is currently located here in Santa Ana. Again, he is not on any form of supervised release. He's not required to register as a sex offender, and he, from what I understand right now, what we're reading out there, he's able to move around freely. So I want to ask, well, one thing I want to say to our community is, please do not contact, confront, or attempt to apprehend this gentleman. Please call the police if you see anything suspicious happening, as you should with any crime. But I want to ask our police chief, at this point in time, other than just simply relying on you to address any potential situations that may happen, is there anything that we can do as a community regarding this situation?
Thanks, Councilmember Becerra. I can tell you that we are consistently monitoring this situation. The person is being held at this point for a different type of reason. We are monitoring that. We're working with several different agencies to determine what the next step for this individual will be. But I can guarantee you that we are on this situation, monitoring it 24 hours a day, as a matter of fact.
Thank you for that, Deputy Chief Kaminsky. So at this point in time, then, our police is monitoring the situation. He's, you said he's being held for another reason at this time. Is this more for a violation of the law, or something else?
So the man is currently not in custody, and he's currently not out in the general public. So that's all.
So he is not roaming our community at this time, then, correct?
No, sir, he is not.
Okay, okay. And I I believe you would do this, but I just would ask that, as there's any updates with this individual, if you could please make sure that our community knows, because, you know, we as a city, we face a lot of things where people want to push their problems onto our shoulders. And, you know, we we have, as a community, we're compassionate, and we have worked to to try to be good neighbors. But on this particular instance, this is not somebody that needs a hand up. This is somebody that wants to commit malicious harm. And I'm not saying that to assert anything, other than the fact that, thanks to our district attorney's office, who has informed us that he has testified to having these sorts of sick thoughts, and and dangerous thoughts, frankly. So I want to, you know, thank our police department for keeping our community aware of what's going on, and please continue to do that. On a much lighter note, I just want to say, you know, I think my colleagues and I, we've had a couple of long meetings, so I don't want to make this meeting any longer. So I just want to say, let's hopefully have a a very well-deserved summer break. As as Councilmember Sarmiento said, let's, you know, definitely be ready to work on anything we can do to help with helping our community in regards to the CARES Act. But with that, I'd just like to say, good night, everybody.
Good night, Councilmember, I believe our next Councilmember is Mendoza?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
No, no, wouldn't it be Becerra, alphabetical order?
That was the...
Go ahead, Mendoza, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the public, because, as you mentioned earlier, and my colleagues mentioned, that the public comments portion of our meeting went very smoothly. We didn't have any technical issues, other than just one drop call. And the the public was cognizant of being professionals, and their comments were received so much more, with much more enthusiasm, when there isn't any profanity. And I appreciate their professionalism in bringing their concerns to us. So thank you to the public, and also thank you for Daisy, because she did an amazing job in monitoring and in getting, having our our comments go on in a smooth manner. The second comment that I have is, I would like to encourage our city to join forces in the Community Choice Energy Program, and be part of the joint powers with the City of Irvine. I believe this is an energy-saving, in clean, green energy that our city needs very much. And it is my understanding that the City of Irvine is willing to to foot the bills for the startup costs, which is incredibly generous, because it will bring much benefit to our city and our city residents. And in addition to this, people will still have a choice to remain with with Edison, or to switch over to this other, this new service. So I encourage our our staff to explore that, and maybe to bring that at our next council meeting or in the near future. The third comment I have is that I agree that the, with our governor extending the moratorium on our eviction, so that we may have our tenants protected at the same, the same date, I believe it's September 30. So if our city can work in conjunction with our, in extending that eviction moratorium, that would be great for our tenants. And lastly, I want to thank Daisy Perez for the idea of the Census Oteria. It's a great idea, and we, it's a method, a productive and effective way to get our our residents to participate in the census. And I actually wanted to participate, but I read on there that city staff or employees cannot participate. So I was bummed. I will not get a chance to win that $100 Visa, but that's okay. I get rewarded in other ways. And those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to staff and everyone who has been jumping in to get our city running smoothly, and to keep our residents safe, and to working and finding solutions to the COVID restrictions, and getting our residents' test kit as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Benialloza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I I won't go too much into detail with what Councilmember Becerra brought up, but I did want to, you know, encourage our community to, to, just like Guardian Grove did, just like Corona did, just like San Diego did, let's rally up and chase them out, because nobody should like that, should be allowed anywhere, in any city. I mean, they should be locked up forever. That is just my honest opinion. With that said, I just wanted to also thank staff, again, for all the amazing work they've been doing the last couple of months throughout COVID. And of course, I want to remind everybody to not forget, if you haven't already done so, to fill out the census by visiting www.my2020census.gov. It's going to take you no more than 10 minutes, and you're going to have a positive impact on the next 10 years of our community. I know that the that the president, unfortunately, is using the census to, as a scare tactic, to to harm and scare our community, communities just like Santa Ana, and it is hateful, and it is hurtful, and it does a huge disservice to a city like ours. So don't listen to that mess. Fill out the census. No one can use it against you. It's only going to help all of us in the long run. So again, www.my2020census.gov. That is it, Mr. Mayor. Good night.
Thank you for that message. Thank you for that message, Councilwoman Benialloza. It's so important, and right now with the pandemic, it makes the census doubly difficult. But thank you. Councilmember Vince Sarmiento, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank you for being flexible and understanding that this is a moment where we do have to do some irregular things, like maybe meet more frequently, and 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 as to the city manager's comment, maybe have a, you know, a recurring agenda item as a receiving file that will allow us to have these updates on what is happening with with the COVID numbers here in the city. And, you know, yeah, when you hear it that way, we're we're the second highest county, just after LA County in the state, and we are the city with the highest number. That really does, you know, kind of make you step back a little bit and realize we are not in a good place. So I know things are daunting, as you were saying, Mr. Mayor, they are changing, but we can't subject ourselves to paralysis and not do anything, because there are things that we can do immediately, even with that first increment of funding that we receive. I think the the scenario that you spoke about, about one, you know, essential worker going out, because they have to go to work, because they have to feed their families, and that's mostly Latinos, essential workers that are going out there that have no reserves, that have no safety net. So they're forced to go to work, and they come back, and they unfortunately are contagious, and they get other members of their family sick, and then the whole household is sick. I appreciated what the city manager said, and in, you know, restating the line item that she had for isolation, and looking at hospital, or excuse me, hotel beds and hotel rooms, or other ways that we can isolate these folks. And yeah, and people may not like it, but at least they're given the option to not infect their children, their spouses, their parents. And that is something that we can do. Other things that we can do are things like ambassadors, because there are still people out there that are unwilling to use face masks, as silly as that may seem, given the numbers that we have here. People still think that it's a partisan issue. It's somehow detracting from their civil liberties, but they don't realize that this is a public health interest that has to overcome these unfortunate issues that have been, I think, kind of started at the national level by the lack of leadership and making this a partisan issue instead of a public health issue, which is what it is. So I think that we could, you know, start working with our businesses, working with our residents, having ambassadors immediately trained, and...
Yeah, this one is a...
Nellie, I think your your speaker's on.
I went I went ahead and muted her. Go ahead, Councilmember Sarmiento.
Thank you. And so, so, you know, I think, you know, we can really get a lot of use from ambassadors. And another, you know, use is to, you know, bring back some of our part-timers who we had to separate with, and talk about people who don't have options, you know, maybe bringing them back and using them and training them and putting them out there to help and, you know, support our businesses that don't have information on what we're doing. So that, there are things like that. And then, you know, getting Wi-Fi for kids who are going to be, you know, remotely learning. They're not going to be going to school. So we may need to make sure that we work with the school district to ensure that there are no obstacles to to kids' learning. So finally, the only thing I was going to maybe leave a little homework for the city attorney on is, I know that there have been efforts in two cycles to try to get an initiative before us on the ballot. And one of them was, one, the the earlier cycle, I think it was short by about, you know, a few hundred signatures, and I think more than 10,000 were gathered. A second cycle was started this time around, and I think, you know, as signatures were being gathered, you know, the pandemic hit, and you can't go door-to-door anymore, and that had to stop. Well, I do want to see what is... Well, I do want to see what is the relief that we can make available. I know there's been other counties or other cities that have been dealing with the same problem. You know, whether or not we want to even think about the merits of it, which I think is, is a worthy one. But that aside, when people gather more than 10,000 signatures for anything, and because, you know, they were short by some, and, you know, again, a pandemic gets in the way, I think we at least have the obligation to research what sort of relief we can, we can afford. So if you don't mind, Adam, city attorney, maybe bringing something back to us, or maybe circulating a memo to the council on advising us what, what the options for relief are on that. And with that, I will say, good night to everybody. Hopefully, everybody has a good night. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, I've taken that down, and we'll make sure to get that information circulated to the council.
Thank you. So with that, let's continue. We'll go on to Councilmember Jose Solario, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three things. First, on all the CARES program, I want to thank the staff, excellent presentation by our city manager, and I know, you know, the elements in place, so we can, you know, roll off some good programs. So thank you so much. And I too agree that there may be new opportunities for some of the STIU workers that currently don't have Parks and Rec center to go work at, and whether that be, you know, sanitation, whether that be things like, you know, maybe even daycare, or, or, you know, brand ambassadors, compliance ambassadors, things of that sort, I think that would be something that we need to be looking at. And I know that there's some out there thinking that we cut money out of the budget that was for STIU, but the dollars, I believe, are still there. And we're just hopeful that in the future, we might be able to bring them back in a place where they can work. Finally, similar to what Councilmember Mendoza said, I too, I am interested in some type of follow-up on the community choice aggregation, very nice comments that were made during public comments, and, you know, not long ago, I had also reviewed the initial letter by Mayor Shea that was sent to Mr. Mayor Folito. And so my request would be that maybe city manager, if you can, you know, look at that letter and work with Mr. Mayor to see what may, might make sense. I think it was just indicating interest, or, you know, a letter of interest, so that might be an easy first step for us to consider. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I want to thank Artisia Pilar. They had their first virtual meeting last Thursday, and it was very successful. I want to thank Lucy Sorozano from Artisia Pilar for hosting, and Scott Cutner, and all the staff who made that possible. And we were briefed on the Tiny Tim Plaza project, and I was able to give a brief update on what's going on within the ward. And thank everyone for joining us this evening, and good night.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Mayor Potem. I just want to end here with a few items. One is that community aggregation, definitely something we should look at. I just don't know if the timing is right. The reason I say that is I think Irvine is being driven a little bit artificially by a council member that's very interested, and so they've kind of set their own internal deadline, but they need others to come in on it. So we should go in, but only if the, you know, city manager suggests and agrees that, you know, physically it's a responsible time for us to potentially take on the burden, because even though there's a lot of long-term upside, there are some short-term expenses that we would have to front, and it, it might just be difficult timing. But look, ultimately, our goal should be that we want to be a nonprofit in our own utility ultimately, and really ultimately emulate what other cities have done. Look at all the, you know, municipal systems, and with the exception of LA, where I just think they've lost control. But most of the other cities, like Riverside, or Sacramento, or in Anaheim, they typically have lower rates, greener power, better infrastructure, and better service. And so definitely, and now that Edison more and more is getting out of the business, we have to start looking at options like community aggregation. And if the timing's right, let's move now. If it's not, let's just leave it in the city manager's hands as to when, you know, physically, you know, she would recommend such consideration. But definitely something that we ought to be thinking about. Secondly, I, I just want to tell you all that I'll be reaching out to you. Maybe there is a good time and a good reason for a special meeting. I don't think we need to do them constantly, but, because it's just, you know, the nature of this is, it's not that we freeze, it's just that, that you want to act judiciously, and that takes a lot of thought, because this pandemic is so complicated, and in many ways, we're alone. Other countries that I think have dealt with it successfully have had just a whole different set of metrics and parameters and approaches, and strong partnership with their federal government. And I, I think the reason, as a country, we have so many cases and so many deaths is because we haven't had a large-scale effort, and nobody's an island here. We're an island in the sense that we have to fight to do whatever we can, but we're an integral part of Orange County. Orange County's a part of, you know, California, and so on and so forth, then, you know, nobody, you know, stops at city limits. You know, city limits are really only in our minds and on maps. They're, they're not in people's lives. Anywhere near any of our city limit areas, you can see people constantly crossing into every other city, as they should. And there goes the virus, you're crossing constantly as well. So I'll be reaching out to you. I'm thinking about, between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting, I'll talk to the city manager, I'll talk to y'all. May we, we put a, an agenda together, and may there's, you know, good reason to come together and to go deep into just a, a single-purpose meeting, which would, you know, obviously, what can we do and what are we doing as it relates to the pandemic. So with that, let me go ahead and, you know, it's nice, a shorter meeting, not that that's our goal, our meeting is, our goal is not short meeting. I believe it's to get the people's work done in an efficient manner. And, and, and so I thank my colleagues for working on everything that you're all doing, and we'll be in touch soon. So with that, well, one final thing, one final thing, and that is, you know, Daisy Perez, she was mentioned earlier. I know part of what she's wanting to do is with this effort as it relates to the census, we can put a little bit of a different approach to it and use it to educate people as it relates to the pandemic. Because a lot of this is going to be trying to get people to wear masks indoors at their home, which is a terrible thing to do to people. It's like, oh my God, now I have to wear it at home? Are you kidding? But if somebody's infected and they can't quarantine, we, we really have to convey that message. And, and I think we can do it, you know, through several different efforts. And I think that's the single most important thing we could do that will really, really bring down our, our spread and our, our deaths and everything else. Right now, I had just logged on very quickly, and I was looking at our, at our numbers, and, you know, we're, we're, again, I think we'll be at 6,000 cases tomorrow. We're at 5823 right now as I speak. And that's really yesterday, because you're always at least a day back, sometimes two days back. By the time they get their numbers in, they compile them, they report them, they put them out, you're always looking in, in the rearview mirror. And the number I don't have, or none of us have, that we should ask, is how many have been tested in Santa Ana? Because, you know, we don't know, we know by city how many cases we have, but we need to know how many tests have been conducted on Santa Ana residents. Because it could be that, that we're lower in terms of a testing rate than other cities, and therefore, our numbers potentially are more inaccurate than others, and obviously, and even then, we're already leading. But, but I think a reason we're leading is also, I believe, we're the largest city in the county because of our undercount. And I know that's what Councilman Benialloza and all of us are trying to do to get the census count up, but I'm telling you, we're a much bigger city than the census gives it credit for, and, and the undercount has been with us for decades. We've done a lot to correct it, but we're not there yet. So with that, let me just thank council members. Let me thank staff as well, and let's keep moving forward. Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.